Good morning, everyone. Thanks for being here. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Today is Wednesday, November thirteenth, and this is the TRPA Advisory Planning Commission. It is nine thirty-six, and the first item on our agenda is the roll call to determine our quorum, and I'm gonna pass this to Tracy.
Mr. Oling?
Present.
Ms. Carr?
Here, thank you.
Ms. Chandler?
Present.
Mr. Drake? Mr. Drew?
Good morning.
Mr. Ferry?
Here.
Mr. Hill? Ms. Widra?
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Judge?
Here.
Mr. McNamara? Ms. Morales O'Neil?
Here.
Ms. Sibber?
Here.
Ms. Stoller, I believe she's on her way. Chief Steven?
Here.
Mr. Techera?
On board.
Mr. Hitchcock?
Here.
Mr. Young? Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Tracy. Ms. Sibber, would you like to just introduce yourself quickly? We're really happy to have you here with us.
Sure. Good morning, everybody. My name is Ashley Sibber, and it's S-I-B-R. I know that trips folks up a little bit. It's pronounced like cyberspace. And like you mentioned, I'm from the Forest Service. I am the Lake Tahoe Basin Management Unit Environmental Coordinator. I'll just also really quickly give you a little bit of background on myself. I'm a landscape architect by training, went to the University of Minnesota. My undergrad is in horticulture, and then my graduate degree is in landscape architecture, also from the University of Minnesota. I came out here in two thousand and ten, and I've worked for the Forest Service as landscape architect for a while, and then moved over into the planning realm, which is what I do now, is the NIPA for the unit. So it's great to be here and looking forward to Forest Service getting back involved on this committee. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. We are thrilled to have you, truly. So thank you for being here. And Mr. Marshall, we just have a quick announcement. We're gonna welcome a new general counsel to our meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's my pleasure to introduce John Marshall's successor, Graham St. Michelle. Graham was appointed by the board at the last meeting as the general counsel. John has gone into semi-retirement as he's easing into full retirement, and we're sure he's gonna pop back up somewhere, but we just don't know where. But I'd like to invite Graham to say a few words to introduce himself.
Good morning, everybody. Had the pleasure of working with many of you already. I've been here since February of this year. I'm from South Lake Tahoe. I grew up here in South Lake Tahoe, actually neighbors with Commissioner Judge on the phone. So yeah, I go back a long way here in Tahoe. I've been in environmental law for about sixteen years now. I spent the first six years of my career in private practice in Washington DC and Sacramento. And then about ten years ago, I started working in the public sector as in-house counsel for the Department of Conservation in California, and then also at the Tahoe Conservancy for a couple of years. So really excited to be here. This agency's mission aligns very closely with my personal goals and personal interests here in Tahoe, balancing environment and development. So I'm really excited to work alongside of all of you.
Thanks a lot, Graham, and welcome. We're looking forward to working with you. All right, Tracy, get ready. I'm gonna go back to you. If you could help me and go over the remote meeting rules for the day, that would be great.
My pleasure. For members of the public, to observe the meeting, go to trpa.gov. Under the calendar header, click on Advisory Planning Commission Meeting, Hybrid Meeting for November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. There you'll find a link to the public webinar hosted on Zoom. To address APC members directly with your comments, raise your hand in Zoom by clicking Raise Hand at the bottom of your screen at the appropriate agenda item. With your hand raised, you will be unmuted by TRPA staff and have three minutes to address the APC. If you have used the dial-in numbers to join us by telephone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand and be unmuted. For items that are agendized as informational only, we will hear public comment during the general public comment period at the end of the meeting. For items agendized for action or possible action, we'll hear public comment before the APC takes any action. To remote APC members, if you wish to speak, you can also raise your hand in Zoom. You'll find the hand icon on the bottom of your screen. Remote APC members may not use the chat box to make any comments or to have sidebar conversations. Please, everyone, remember to mute your mic unless speaking to cut down on background noise. And finally, we'd also like to ask that you turn your cameras on remotely if you're able. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. And I'll note that Ms. Stoller is here, our vice chair. So welcome. Morning. Okay, I'm gonna move us to item two, which is approval of our agenda. Staff, do we have any changes to our agenda?
Mr. Chairman, there are no changes.
Thank you, John. We will deem the agenda approved as it was posted for the record, and I'll move us to item three, Public Interest Comments. Do we need to do the remote meeting rules again, Tracy? I think you just read them, but my notes are saying to go back to you.
I'll refer to general counsel if we want to hear them again.
Yeah, no, it's okay. I think we're good, too. Okay. So Public Interest Comments, this is for any members of the public wishing to address the APC on non-agenda items. Now is your opportunity. So members in the room can come to the podium.
Good morning, Ellie Waller. You will be hearing the South Shore Area Plan Douglas County probably in early two thousand and twenty-five. I'm looking forward to robust discussions about that area plan. At this point, my opinion is it's a process that has evolved poorly, and I'm hoping that we get it straightened out between TRPA and the county staff, who doesn't happen to be here today. It's problematic to me that it has evolved so poorly, confusing the public as well as our county management and county staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellie. Any other members of the public? Okay, seeing none, let's go online. Members of the public online, please go ahead and raise your hand if you wish to address the APC on non-agenda items.
Mr. Chair, there are no hands raised to comment.
Thank you, Catherine. Okay, I'm gonna move us to Agenda Item Four. This is Disposition of Minutes. We do have a set of minutes from, unbelievably, our last meeting was October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. It's on page five of your packets. Any questions or comments from APC members on the minutes?
I think that was August fourteenth.
What did I say?
October.
Okay, sorry about that. I was looking at the word August. It was August. My apologies. Thank you, Steve. Any comments? Members online, APC members? Okay, we're good. I would entertain a motion on the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Drake.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Stoller. And I believe we need, do we need a roll call vote on this one?
I believe it's just a voice vote.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mark Steve Techer as abstaining. I was not at that meeting.
Okay, Steve?
Thank you.
I'd like to, well, Garth.
Garth abstaining.
I'm also abstaining, too. Kate Morales O'Neil was not, I was not at that meeting.
Thanks, Kate. And looks like Stacy, too?
And I will abstain because I also was not in attendance.
Okay, Ms. Sibber also?
Yes.
Okay.
I guess I too, I'm abstainer. Although I was there, I wasn't part of the APC Brian Jobs here.
Mr. Judge also abstains. Did you get all those? Okay. As many abstentions as approvals, but no, no no's. So we're good. Okay, let's move on to the heart of our agenda. This is item five, our public hearing. Let's hear item five A. This is a discussion and possible recommendation for approval of proposed amendments to Chapter thirteen of the TRPA Code of Ordinances and the goals and policies of the regional plan regarding the review and potential approval process for local jurisdiction area plans that propose alternative density and height limits in centers. Information on this item can be found on page thirty-three of your packets, and I'm gonna pass this over to Alyssa Bettenger to present on this item. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. I'm Alyssa Bettenger with TRPA. I'm here to present the proposed amendments to Chapter thirteen and the goals and policies of the regional plan. Today, we're asking for your recommendation of the amendments that are shown in Attachment B of your packet. We did do an informational update on this item back in August, although it was clear that many of you are not in, present for that meeting. Next slide, please. I know many of you are very familiar with our area plan process, but area plan, our area plan framework was new with the regional plan in two thousand and twelve. It gives local jurisdictions the ability to have more control over planning decisions in their community while simultaneously helping us to implement the goals and policies of the regional plan. During the regional plan update, a large goal of that plan was to encourage growth and redevelopment of our town centers. And so we do that through allowing higher height coverage and density in our, in our centers. Next slide, please. And this table shown on this slide is pulled directly from Chapter thirteen of our Code of Ordinances, which is our area plan chapter. It shows the density and height limits that we currently have in Chapter thirteen. So when local jurisdictions are developing a new area plan or doing an area plan amendment, they typically propose height and density standards that are within these limits shown on the screen. However, local jurisdictions are starting to come forward with higher density and height limits than are shown on this screen. Some of you may remember back in August, you recommended approval of the City of South Lake Tahoe's tourist core area plan and Tahoe Valley area plan amendments that were proposing up to sixty-five units per acre density in their town centers. That is currently higher than what we allow at twenty-five units per acre in Chapter thirteen. We, our staff have also been discussing the possible amendments to Douglas County's South Shore area plan for the Barton Project, and that area plan amendment may need additional height over what we allow at fifty-six feet in our town centers. Next slide, please. And so our current process for when local jurisdictions do come forward asking for additional height and density, or proposing additional height and density above what we currently allow, is to, one, do an area plan amendment, and, two, we have to also amend our code to allow for that exception to happen for that specific area. So, for example, in the City of South Lake Tahoe, we would allow in our code for that sixty-five units per acre density to take effect in town centers. There are a couple of reasons why our current process is not ideal. One is that it results in our code essentially being what we call spot zoned, so having special regulations or specifications for areas or districts or sites specific to local jurisdictions, instead of having sort of a more regional code, which is what we really wanted the area plan framework to accomplish. And, two, doing a TRPA code amendment is a largely duplicative process to the area plan amendment. As you can see up on this slide, we, we put together, you know, the code language itself. We go through an environmental analysis, findings, all of the standard documents that we have to put together for a code amendment. And so this does take, you know, considerable, considerable amount of staff time when we do this. And so because there are two instances of local jurisdictions coming forward, you know, with the city right now and Douglas County likely coming forward in the future for possible height amendments, we see an opportunity to standardize our process upfront by removing the need for a TRPA code amendment. And instead of, of, you know, that number two up here, we would be putting in place consistent requirements for when these situations arise, for how we would evaluate these alternative proposals. I do wanna note that there would still be discretionary review of any area, new area plans or area plan amendments. So we're not proposing to change the hearing process. The area plans would still come to APC and Governing Board for approval. Next slide. So again, this amendment would set the criteria for how we would evaluate a proposal from a local jurisdiction coming forward with additional height or, or density above what is set forth in our current limits in Chapter thirteen. So for height and density, the, you know, the, those alternative standards would need to be consistent with the overall goals and policies of our regional plan and demonstrate that there is no environmental impact through, you know, an IEC or a larger, you know, in EA if that is deemed appropriate. And then again, it's still, you know, area plan amendments still need to be approved by APC and Governing Board. In addition, for any proposals in height over fifty-six feet in town centers specifically, the area plan needs to include findings one, three, and nine in their actual area plan language. So any future project coming forward would be subject to those findings in the area plan. They would also need to have adopted design standards, the local jurisdiction would. And then residential uses cannot be subject to the density maximums in Chapter thirteen. The reason that we're putting this requirement in place is that by allowing additional building height essentially expands the overall building space. And so we want to encourage smaller residential units, and, and the way to do that is through allowing higher density. I'm happy to answer any questions on that, too. Again, this is the criteria that we would use to evaluate any proposals that come to us. Under our current process, we don't have any of these requirements. So we actually feel like this, this gives us some guardrails for evaluating any proposals that we don't currently have. There, oh, I also wanna note that when we talk about a density proposal, this, we're not proposing any changes to our overall growth caps. So any alternative density standard that would come forward in the future would not be, you know, would still be subject to our existing growth caps. Next slide. So the next steps on this, as I mentioned earlier, the City of South Lake Tahoe's tourist core area plan and Tahoe Valley area plan, they need an amendment to Chapter thirteen, whether it's to allow, you know, whether it's this amendment or it's an amendment specific to the city like we, you know, our current process would allow. They need that to move forward with their area plan amendments that are going to RPC next week and then Governing Board next month. And so we are proposing, or we would be moving this amendment forward on the same timeline with, with those same meetings. Next slide. With that, I will turn it back over to Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Alyssa. That was great.
May I make one? I know we've gotten a lot of public comments, including up till four o'clock yesterday, and those have been forwarded to you. And reading those, I just wanna make it clear to everybody what we're considering and not considering today. So we are not considering any projects. I wanna clarify that. This doesn't approve any projects, doesn't approve any amendments to the area plans for any jurisdiction. What it does is clarify the process and gives us some minimum standards. Alyssa went through those, but findings on heights, design standards, which we didn't require before. So it gives us some minimum and consistent standards when those do come forward. And density, as you know, from the City of South Lake Tahoe, and height potentially are gonna come forward. We know they're gonna come forward, so we're trying to be proactive and set, set a stage for a better deliberative process and more common sense process. So I just wanna make sure everybody knows that, and those that were not amending any area plans, were not reviewing or adopting any projects or approving any projects. Just because, you know, we got so many comments that seemed to not recognize that.
Yeah, thanks, John. So yeah, even though the city's area plan amendments are going on the exact same dates, like you said, Alyssa, that would be a separate action. These amendments wouldn't approve those area plan amendments.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
But these, would these amendments be in play, because they're happening at the same meetings? If we, if we recommend these today, and ultimately they're approved, could those standards then be the standards by which the city's area plan amendments are judged? Would that, would that be the case, even though they're happening at the same meetings?
Yeah, so what the, what were the criteria that we're proposing that was on the slide? The city's proposal would meet that criteria. They are not proposing to increase height. So just to make that clear, it's only residential density in their town centers. And we, we would be, yeah, considering both items at the same meeting. So I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Graham, but I don't think we would be technically evaluating the city's proposal based on the proposed criteria. But that said, they would meet that, the criteria that we've put forth.
All right, thanks, Alyssa. Okay, I'm gonna go to my fellow APC members for questions and comments. Let's start in the room here first, and then I'll go online. I'll, let's go this way. So I'll start with Ms. Sibber.
Hi, thank you. I just had a question as to the, and I apologize. I'm kinda coming in here a little bit late in the process, so apologize if this is, everybody else is all clear on this. But the, the town centers, those are already currently mapped. That, that's correct. Like there's, we have all these, these mapped out pieces. And I'm just curious if, if in the town centers piece, that that takes into consideration, like the adjacent uses. And I'll give the specific apropos example is, you know, the Barton area with the Forest Service, like Burke Creek, you know, that, that area, La Muata, Ray Meadow next to it. And so it seems like by a mapping exercise, like, you know, that a property immediately across from it would be considered a town center, would be eligible then for the consideration under the new, under this new change to the code then for additional height. Is that correct?
Yeah, correct. So the height, the height would apply in towns, or the height could apply in town centers. Again, we're not approving any additional height today. We're just approving a process. But yes, correct, the, the town centers are already mapped, and the height that we're talking about today could apply in town centers. Okay, but then you've been.
I don't think Ray Meadows is in the town center. Is that, that's part of your question?
The Barton property across the street.
Is, but, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So I just, and then you mentioned this, but I'll just wanna double check that if this does go through, there is still an opportunity to, you know, actually talk through individual proposals that come up. And so then that would be the place where there could be some discretion given with, maybe there is height allowance allowed, but we're taking into consideration some other things around. Is that an accurate statement?
Maybe I can give you a practical example. It's not the Barton project, but the City of South Lake Tahoe and their area plan, where they have different heights and densities, they have a requirement for a gradient, if you will, of height and density as you move from one to the other. That's part of their design standards. Mr. Hitchcock could speak to it better than I can. So that's the kind of thing that we want to see in the area plans going forward. So I think that, I hope that answers your question.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I can expand on that. You know, still in our planning process, that issue actually came up in increasing height in our town centers and its relationship to adjacent residential areas. And so in our process, and we deliberately adopted design standards that required stair step design standards in order to reduce that potential effect on residential neighborhoods. And in addition, we also adopted specifically findings one, three, and nine in, in our area plans, which basically is intended to protect the scenic resources and the community character of the base.
Thanks, Hitch. Ms. Widra?
Yeah, thank you, Alyssa. Quick question. So understanding does have, you know, the, the jurisdiction needs to have design standards. Do those need to be improved upon, or, or do the ones that exist within an area plan, you know, are you guys looking at those? Maybe Hitch, you know, you said you looked at it just to help support the findings that needed to be made. So, so it's not necessarily a requirement to revise your design standards, but does TRPA have you, you know, do you look at the design standards? And/or would that be a piece that should come with an area plan amendment? Should a jurisdiction, you know, go through a similar process that City of South Lake?
Yeah, so we would be looking for design standards that essentially address building height over fifty-six feet. So, you know, talking about facade, building orientation, screening, roof pitch, all of that. And so, and, you know, that would obviously come during the amendment process. So it would kind of depend on, you know, what exists today and, and what's being proposed in the future. Thanks.
Thanks, Stacy. Mr. Oling?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for your presentation. One of the things that you stated during the, or under the existing process, is there's a possibility for spot zoning to occur. And then with the proposed process, is that not a possibility? Can you expand on that a little bit, please?
Yeah, so under our current process, we have a number of instances in Chapter thirty-one, which is our density chapter, and Chapter thirty-seven, which is our height chapter, where it says, you know, additions to, or exceptions to height or exceptions to density standards. And we have these areas sort of listed out. And we would like to, I guess, sort of move away from that approach and have these exceptions listed in the actual area plans themselves, where we, we sort of intended them to live back in two thousand and twelve when we set up the area plan framework. And so this code amendment is sort of setting the general process by which local jurisdictions would go through, and we wouldn't have to amend our code every time or each time there is, uh, and I guess, an exception to our density and height standards. John?
If I can add to that, it's not so much exception. What we found is project will come in, okay, it's not allowed, so do we like the project? Then let's amend the area plan, or let's, and we have to amend our code at the same time. What the regional plan calls for is intensifying or moving, you know, basically, we're looking at the regional development footprint and moving it out of sensitive, remote areas and moving it into town centers. So we're saying in town centers, if you meet these standards that we just went through, we will consider additional density or height, because that's where we wanna see that. And so that's really what we're doing. Instead of doing it one-off when a project comes through, we're trying to be consistent and, and really implement the regional plan. So I hope that answered your question.
Yeah, no, no, thank you. That, that, that does help. One of the other questions that I have, and I was looking specifically at page thirty-six. And it's this discussion here, starting on page thirty-five under Environmental Review. And in the future, basically, if you go to the page thirty-six, it says, "As such, this amendment would not have been environmental impact. As discussed above, any future request for additional height or density, which may be requested with or without the proposed action, will be reviewed for environmental impacts prior to approval." I, I guess one of the concerns that I have here, and maybe I'm reading this wrong, is can someone propose additional height within a town center without a proposed action? Can, can they move forward and say, "We want to have, you know, X amount of additional height within this town center without a, a project associated with it?" Because I don't understand how you can do an environmental review on a request without something to actually review.
You can do an environmental review on a plan. In fact, Placer County did that for their area.
Yeah, but I guess what I'm saying is like, for additional height, how can you analyze an additional height without something to put into, do, do a scenic analysis for something that's hypothetical? I guess, I, I just, I see a little bit of, I don't know exactly how, what I'm trying to. I don't know exactly how, what I'm trying to say. I, I see that there's something that's maybe missing here. And, and, and maybe, I don't know, I, I know, John, you've done a bunch of scenic analysis. How can you do scenic analysis on a plan without a building or a structure to review?
So, so in the, in particularly in the tourist core, uh, what we did was we basically model individual simulations. What we did is we, we used three D modeling using SketchUp in the various town centers, basically model out the basic height and then, and then determine where TRPA has significant scenic resource points for that area. And from those locations, and we analyze whether that additional height would have impacts on whether we'd block, uh, ridge line views or significant resources. So it is possible to theoretically analyze potential height increases by doing theoretical modeling. And that's what we did for the TC.
Yeah, okay. And so in, in such instances that, do you do it for all the buildings? I mean, how do you identify where that additional height is going within the area plan?
All the parcels in the town center.
All the parcels. So like, like if it's saturated.
And if your design standard said on the edge, you have this step down we were talking about earlier.
Right.
That's what you would use. And Placer did something similar when they did their area plan for that part of the basin.
Thank you.
Thanks, Garth. So yeah, the environmental analysis could occur on the plan, but then more than likely would also happen on the project. Right? So it'd be a two-step. Yeah. Okay. Good discussion. Uh, other APC members in the room? Comments, questions? Everybody's, Mr. Drake?
Maybe just a clarification. Thanks for the presentation. Um, is I'm understanding this. Well, my question is, are there any new standards being put in place as a part of this proposed action? Are we leaning on one hundred percent existing standards that are already in place and just working on a process improvement, so to speak?
This action is a process improvement. Um, I do wanna note that this, so the city's amendments um, that came before APC back in August, the APC recommended approval of both of those amendments to the area plans subject to this amendment going through. Um, so they are separate actions, but they are happening, they would be happening simultaneously, um, at, at the same meeting, I guess, different, different items, um, same meeting. But this item is just a process improvement. There's no different standards going to, going into effect.
Maybe I'll, I'll add, you know, it, it, what it really does is codifies the process that we already envision. You know, under our current, the, the current is the code can be amended. Um, so if an area plans comes forward, that's a little different than what the code, those limits that are set in the code, there's, as under today's, you know, situation, we can go through and amend the code. And that, that requires TRPA to put its own code amendment into our, into our, uh, process. Um, what we're doing here is just codifying what we would look at, the environmental review, all the substantive elements are still there. The only difference in this, the process improvement that we're talking about is it just reduces that additional step for TRPA to go in and amend its, its, its own code in chapters thirty-one and thirty-seven, which are the height and density chapters. So you won't have these individual exceptions in TRPA's code. It would be, um, you know, kind of one code amendment to chapter thirteen, which we're talking about here, um, to sort of, um, you know, codify that process and then not require us to do additional code changes in chapters thirty-one and thirty-seven every time this happens.
And Kevin, I'll add to, Graham's addition is, it's not new standards, but where they get located is, is different because they, they will move, like the height findings Alyssa mentioned, those will get moved into the area plan for the area plan to be amendment to be considered by the TRPA governing board. TRPA governing board will still have to approve every, every plan.
One of the underlying themes in a lot of the, the public comments was a perception that TRPA is pushing that more of the, the sort of greasing the skids to get higher density development in our town centers, which the regional plan does call for. One of the concerns brought up is that anything we're doing to make it easier to develop market rate housing in town centers is going to create less incentive to create deed restricted housing, which we also desperately want in town centers. As I'm reading, as I'm reviewing this, listening to the presentation, doesn't sound like anything substantive is changing, but i- am I missing something here? And Alyssa, maybe you can speak to that. You've worked tirelessly on deed restricted housing for many years now.
Yeah, I don't think you're missing anything. Um, again, we're not approving any, uh, different standards. We're just putting, it's, it's a process improvement.
Yeah, please, Ms. Stoller.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a clarifying question. I found your slide showing the current process and proposed process to be really compelling. Because I really love the idea of streamlining and eliminating redundancy. Um, my question is, if the current process requires two governing board approvals essentially, does that second governing board approval for the TRPA code amendment, if the governing board were to decide against approving or to decline their approval, would then that render the first appro- approval void? Does that make sense?
Like, under our current process?
Process, right. If the governing board, um, decline their approval to amend the TRPA code, would that then have a cascading effect? And render that first approval under the area plan amendment void?
Yeah, so under our current process, if the governing board didn't approve the TRPA code amendment number two, um, then they, then they wouldn't be able to find number one in conformance with our code.
Right, okay. All right, thanks for that clarification. Um, the way that I'm looking at this is that the current process allows for APC and governing board to have two bites at the apple. So if we were to miss something under the first reveal, we would have an opportunity to catch it under our second reveal. I'm not saying that I am in favor of keeping it the way it is. I'm just trying to recognize that we will have an obligation in, in this proposed process to really put our thought and effort into our review, because this will be our only chance. There's not going to be a second time that it's coming back to us. Um, and so I just wanted to make sure that it's communicated well to APC and governing board members, um, especially as project-driven amendments come to the fore so that we are not kind of subject to this piecemeal planning. But we're really trying to be comprehensive and thoughtful.
You won't get two bites at the apple for the area plan. You get one bite at the apple. What you will then have to do is the second apple you'll have to deal with every time, to use your metaphor, is you'll have to then amend the TRPA code and regional plan to allow what's in the area plan. So what we're saying is instead of doing an area plan and then amending the regional plan and code, let's amend the regional plan and code now to say what we want. So when the area plans come forward, you can, you can measure it against those criteria. So you'll still have, if you keep it the way it is, you'll still have two actions, but it won't be two actions on the same thing. Does that?
Yeah, I think that makes sense. It would, it would happen concurrently anyway, is what you're saying. Got it. Okay, understood.
Uh, yeah, Mr. Hitchcock.
Alyssa, I just had a clarifying question. So this process does not get rid of the fact that you still have to grow the, the compliance. You still have to go to the compliance review process, correct, for any area plan that comes forward? That the RPC, Regional Plan Committee, as well as the governing board, still has to make the compliance findings.
Correct.
Thank you. Um, at least from the city's perspective, we, we like the flex, flexibility that's being proposed here. Um, you know, from the city's perspective, you know, we're focusing on developing housing of all types, not just affordable, but also market rate units and, um, and we believe to achieve that, that we need higher density, at least in our, our jurisdiction, not necessarily the rest of the basin. And I think this sets up a, a system that creates flexibility system, allows your, your, local jurisdictions to decide how they want their land use patterns to evolve over time. Thanks.
I agree with that, John, from our perspective. Uh, Ms. Cyber.
Thanks. Uh, this one, I'll, I'll have it be a, a comment. I think, uh, in, in thinking through what everyone has said here, I'll just maybe reiterate that the original maps that were made, you know, when it comes to, for example, forest service land, they're kind of like stamps, you know, that, that are surrounding all of these, these other polygons. And so I think downtown South Lake Tahoe is an example of where it's pretty easy to kind of do the feathering type things that you're talking about. Um, but outside of that, if that does not currently, you know, exist in, in the, the current plan, then essentially we would be saying, okay, now, now the argument becomes, well, it's allowed by code. So tell me why you can't, why I can't do this here. Um, and I don't know necessarily that the, that edge condition was taken into account, um, in, in thinking through this process here. So I'll just, um, and I don't know if there is any more clarification I need to give in order to explain myself, but, um, just a concern about that edge effect and, and how the planning that has, you know, happened so far did not really take that into consideration. And that moving forward, we would then have to fight that fight on all of those edge effects as to, again, code says I can do it, so to tell me why I can't.
You're talking about transition zones, kind of. And I think TRPA and the phase two amendments, there was transition zone standards. Correct me if I'm wrong.
I, I asked Alyssa if she could find a town center map, so Ashley would be familiar with it. It's not, it's not that much area. And it's, it's not, well, you can look at the map and see.
Yeah.
But Ashley, I think what you're referring to are the existing design standards in each area plan, right? Is that what you're saying? Is like if, if, if we move forward with this, we're basically accepting the existing design standards for each area plan. I mean, having to rely on them, right? Because that's, they need to meet those. And if those aren't acceptable, there's no opportunity right now in this process to update those. Is that, is that kind of what you're saying?
Yes, and, and the, the approach that South Lake, the city of South Lake took was that when they came with this proposal, it sounds like they took those things into consideration. That may not necessarily occur around the basin. And so then now we're sort of making this blanket approach and, um, you know, it'd be great to look at, at the map. Um, and maybe my concerns are not necessarily found, you know, founded in reality. But again, using the example right down the street here, it's my understanding that that Barton property um, is in the town centers, would be eligible for the increased height. And, and so there essentially would be no transition between there and the adjacent, you know, um, uh, forest recreation. Um, so that's what I'm getting at, is that when these maps were made, I think that, yes, makes sense that that is a, a town center there, but there's also some other things to take into consideration. When that map was, there was a casino on that property when that map was made. Um, and there are other examples, I think, around the basin. That one just happens to be the one that is.
Let me clarify, their area plans are already in place. Um, so when an amendment comes forward, they would have to address this. So there's already an area plan for the South Shore that has a height maximum of fifty-six feet
Right.
on that site. For them to propose more, they would have to also address that edge issue. And that's something you would look at. Um, you aren't, you aren't approving that today. You're just approving that.
Right.
Having some standards if they want to propose that. So I don't know if that helps or not.
And the design standards in the area plans would have already come through this committee and, and would have been approved by the governing board. And they all need to meet chapter thirteen standards. So I, you know, there should be consistency there. Um, if that helps.
Okay. Yeah, we do have the town center map if, if we wanna zoom in on any of these specific areas.
Maybe, maybe just the, the South Shore area, just would be curious what those particular pieces are. And if it's not gonna work out, it's not a big deal.
Yeah, tell us what we're looking at, Alyssa.
This is the South Shore area plan, which I think you were referring to. Um, and so the, the, yeah, the, um,
the state line, that one parcel right there is the one that we're talking about.
Correct.
Thank you. I guess, I think maybe the statement still stands that the, the maps, um, don't necessarily take into account, uh, maybe some of the changes that have occurred since that originally uh, happened with the original intent of some of those parcels that are, that no longer is, no longer.
Let me clarify, that, that town center boundary and that area planet is in place, and that's what you'd have to use now.
Right.
So if you, when they come through with a proposal and you think the edge condition is not adequately addressed, that's when you can say that. Right now, if you don't do that, then this is what the plan is. There's no amendment that comes forward. That's what it is. So we're viewing it as an opportunity to fine tune the plans if they need to be, and for you all to do that. Hope that helps.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, let me acknowledge, we do have two APC members that have had their hands up for a while. So I'm gonna first go to Mr. Young and then we'll go to you, Kate, after that. So Eric, on to you.
Thank you, uh, Chair. Uh, good morning, everybody. Um, I really appreciate these, uh, this proposed change. I appreciate the, the, uh, the thought behind it. I think all of us here on the APC can remember having to do these amendments. We, we, we recognize the existing process. We've all been a part of it. And, um, uh, we've all, we've all sat there at the very end when it was time to do the findings. And we all have to, have to work extra hard to make sure we, okay, 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 this is what we're doing, right? This is because of the area plan amendment. Now we have to do that, do the, uh, code amendment. And the staff has to explain it to us, um, you know, over again. And we, and somebody has to choose to do, to read those, uh, to read those motions. Um, I think this is a great movement towards trying to simplify things without really taking away any significant level of review, any significant, um, authority or, or, um, I, 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 I respect the idea that, um, uh, we need to get it right the first time. I think we're pretty good at that. And I think it's pretty rare that we go, oops, we missed that. Um, if it does happen, staff and everybody works with us. I, I think this is a really meaningful effort um, to try and make things work more logically and more smoothly without really taking away any of the, um, um, important review that has to occur. So I, I, and I would, I, I always come back to, I, um, what I see as kind of the, the foundation, the bedrock of the existing regional plan being this concept of environmental redevelopment. That if we're gonna make progress on some of the important environmental issues, the way to do it is to get somebody to redevelop their property, to go in and do a project. We need people to come in and do projects in order to hit them up for all the new environmental regulations. That to us is progress. That to us is implementing the regional plan. And sometimes we've found this out over and over again, and we're working really hard on it. That our standards, our guidelines for height, density, coverage, all kinds of things. end up being barriers or too many hoops to jump through in order to really achieve our goal of environmental redevelopment. They are, they're real disincentives to investment in properties that would benefit from. So I see TRPA as working pretty hard to find that right balance of what are the right development standards that we need to you know, to have decent communities, right? We don't want to say unlimited density, unlimited height. We have to draw the box somewhere. But when we find that those things are disincentives to our overall goals, we've been working really hard to make progress on that. And that's what I see happening here. We are not changing those standards. That's, that is a a real answer. That's the correct answer. We're not changing those standards today, but let's not kid ourselves. This is to facilitate changing the standard around the basin if each jurisdiction wants to do that. So this will result in different height and density standards. We'll get there in a much less painful way, much less red tape with the same level of review. So I, and I really kind of appreciate where this is all going. I, I do have the one question, though, about what I think was the very first finding, which is that that the change has to be consistent with the goals and policies of the regional plan. And I mean, and that's, you know, of course, that's there, right? But can you walk me through how that works? How does, how does TRPA staff determine that? For the local staff to absorb and understand if and where they are not consistent with the regional plan? I, I, I know that's something that's a typical finding that has to happen for everything. But as a local staff member, my concern is always moving as much toward objectivity as possible and away from any kind of a subjective review. So how does that review work? How does the, yes, it's consistent with the goals and policies of the regional plan? How does that work in a objective way? So thanks for listening to me. That's, that's all I've got. I'll sit back and listen. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Alyssa, you want to respond to that?
Yeah, so we would do, we would look at that in a similar way to how we would today if, you know, the city, for example, is coming for, has come forward with increased density, we've, with increased residential density specifically in town centers, which we feel like does further the goals of our regional plan by getting smaller residential units, hopefully more affordable, smaller units in our, in the city's town centers. I, I, I can't say exactly what will be proposed in the future, but we would we would look at it in in compare it with our regional plan. And if it's you know, proposing something that doesn't make sense blatantly, then, you know, we would have the ability to say, no, you need to, you know, go back to the drawing board, come back.
Maybe I'll answer that a little more generically, Eric. I don't, maybe that's what you were asking. As you know, when you all did the Washoe Tahoe Basin Area Plan or Tahoe Area Plan, we used the compliance checklist. That's what we would be using, general, in the general sense, not for a specific height amendment. If that answers your question.
That's nothing, nothing. That, that, that is, because that's something that the local, like the local staff person or anybody, I mean, can can use to understand more specifically what is, what that consistency review means. A checklist is a great tool. So if that's what's happening, that's great to know. And yeah, thank you for that answer. To both of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Ms. Morales O'Neil, on to you.
Thank you so much, Kate Morales, Planning Manager, Douglas County, for the record. I just want to, for clarity purposes and to emphasize, especially for our Douglas County constituents, because as, as a county representative and future amendments to the South Shore area plan that we anticipate will involve height and amendment we've been working on, as, as all of you know, for quite a long time. It is important to understand that these are all requirements that we have been addressing. So I, I think it's important to, for everyone to understand that the, this, this amendment is not changing what is already required for a height amendment process, the, the scenic analysis, the findings, the three findings for height are all things that that are being addressed. So I just want, don't want there to be any confusion as far as that future amendment moving forward, that somehow this is helping that amendment. I think perception is important and to, you know, address that and be upfront and for everyone to understand that it is not simplifying or changing any requirement. It's just, I think the, the key word is codifying and making it more clear. And again, getting rid of the actual additional TRPA code amendment. So I just wanted for clarity purposes, just to, to, to state that.
Thank you, Kate. Appreciate that. Okay, I don't see any other hands raised online. Any final thoughts in the room before we go to public comment? Okay, so let's move on to public comment on this item. I'll ask members of the public here in person to come to the podium first. And for members online, please, let's see, I'm going to read my notes here. Please raise your hand by clicking the raise hand button at the bottom of your Zoom screen or by dialing star nine on your telephone. And you will be called upon after we take public comment in the room and unmuted by a TRPA staff member. So let's go to members of the public that wish to comment on item five A first. Please come to the podium and state your name.
Good morning, Ellie Waller. The proposal before you today shows just how far TRPA is willing to push through considerations for a regional amendment without including the public most affected. Having appointed spokespeople attend APC meetings that may or may not report back to the electeds is outrageous, disingenuous, and definitely not transparent, in my opinion. The May eighth draft minutes in the August packet, TRPA General Counsel John Marshall clarified that code amendments go into effect sixty days after approval, where it plan amendments become effective immediately. In the TRPA world, it's what's affected at the time of the permit issue, not at the filing of application. Mr. Marshall confirmed that theoretically, if a developer submits an application, the rules can change when the time the application is submitted. So I say proposed rules that allowed flexibility, increased height and density, for example, benefit known projects. We're talking about Barton. We're going to talk about it a lot. It's a hot mess of a process. I will not go into details. But you will hear from me often. And the governing board in Douglas County have already. Furthermore, in the draft minutes, TRPA staff and advisory boards have made it clear that the amendment to the regional code of ordinances is necessary for an area plan to get conformance. I do not understand why the Phase Two housing amendments didn't trigger code amendments not through an area plan. This is ludicrously disordered, ass backwards, in my opinion. Perceived area plans supersede TRPA code with findings. And yes, three hundred and seventy-five amendments I painstakingly looked at in Chapter one point eight to various chapters cannot be applied as stated to projects. Then the regional plan must be updated through proper environmental analysis and study, unless you forget cumulative impacts of regional growth. Zero analysis of short term impacts with regional growth in Reno, Carson City, et cetera. This piecemeal approach must stop now, and you as a recommending body to acknowledge that furthering these types of amendments should require regional analyses, which is the purview of the TRPA, not one project or area plan or local jurisdiction. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Waller. Hi.
Good morning, Ann Nichols, North Tahoe Preservation Alliance. We all think this Tahoe is a special place, right? We do. But there's too many questions here that you guys don't understand and we don't understand for sure. And a two-page packet, basically, for the, a change to the regional plan is totally insufficient. You know, I want these questions answered, too. How it reads to me is the area plans are going to be in control once TRPA approves them. Right? Which they have some already. So if that's the case, then really isn't it all being controlled by the county? And can't they change it then whenever they want, which they have been doing? Placer has been doing that consistently. So, you know, we need, let's have some examples. Let's, okay, so the height, the three findings for height is don't be above the tree canopy. Well, some trees are a hundred and fifty feet tall. Okay, fine. Oh, and if you're three hundred feet away from the project and there are no trees, like in the case of the Waldorf Astoria, then it can't, you know, obscure the ridge. Well, the ridge above the Waldorf Astoria is five hundred feet high. I mean, there's just, there's no real thought going in here. This is just a response to a request for South Lake Tahoe. North Shore is a lot different. But we're all one lake and the lake's getting to be a mess. The, you know, one wonders, what is TRPA for anymore? The reason you were created was to get it out of the hands of the two states and the counties. And now we've gone full circle. We've gone all the way back. I mean, this is just a complete obfuscation of the real purpose. And that's why we don't have the freeway around the lake. We don't have the bridge over Emerald Bay. We're going that direction again. So I hope you guys will really think about it. This is too, it's premature. We have too many questions. How is this really going to work? It's not just clarifying. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. Good morning.
My name is Kirk Walder. I chair the Douglas County Planning Commission. I am not here in that role. I'm only speaking here as an individual. But I do want to concur with the comments that were made by our planning manager, Kate Morales O'Neil. I do think this is a process improvement that's within your jurisdiction. On behalf of Douglas County's role in any future proposals that come before you, we have a very transparent process, as you do, too. We always include the public very, very considerably in our process. The staff clearly speaks to the elected officials, county commissioners who govern what we do. The Planning Commission is appointed as you are appointed. So I think the, the proposals that we will bring forward in the future will be thoroughly vetted. I look forward to working with you folks. If you do have questions of the Planning Commission, Kate is always there and I am always here to answer those questions. So I wanted to clarify those matters and I would think it's very appropriate for you to go forward with what you have on the table today. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk, for your comments. Other members in the room? Good morning.
My name is Christina Hill. I used to work at TRPA as the shore zone planner, and I've been living full time in the Tahoe Basin for over forty-four years. The staff summary states that the proposed amendments to Chapter thirteen and the goals and policies do not involve or result in any new development. How can that be true if the amendments allow for increased building height and increased density over what is allowed now? The process, the proposed amendments to the regional plan formalize a process for local jurisdictions proposing high density and height in town centers. I'm not seeing this as a process change. This is an increase in density and height. And it's allowing it to go forward without the review that is previous, I mean, currently in place. The process was determined not to have any environmental impacts based on an environmental checklist, which, you know, cavalierly, every question is answered, no, no, you just check a box. It's not very much of a analysis to be saying much. One of the questions is human health. Will the proposal result in creation of any health hazards or potential health hazards? And another question is exposure of people to potential health hazards. And they check no. In case you missed it, the California's First District Court of Appeal ruled on October twenty-third to reject a project's revised EIR because developers had failed to account for risk of wildfire the development would have on areas susceptible to human caused blazes. The court concluded, no developer should be allowed to make it harder for people to escape deadly fires. In truth, the impact on human health is exacerbated by large mixed-use projects like the many proposed on the North Shore. Yet you all keep approving them because you claim that fire protection is not your jurisdiction. Unfortunately, it seems common sense can only be determined by the court system. Meanwhile, our lives are at stake. It used to be your job to protect Lake Tahoe. In addition to wildfire evacuation impacts, prior to taking any action on this item, you should be aware that high density and high buildings have water quality impacts as well. Regardless of your science, a hundred percent land coverage resulting from unlimited density leaves little area for infiltration, resulting in more urban runoff being discharged directly into the lake, resulting in less water clarity and more pollution and algae. Where is that environmental impact being justified in the checklist? Since these amendments are blatantly being made to accommodate the city of South Lake Tahoe and Barton proposal in Douglas County, why not limit their jurisdiction to the specific area? These amendments have no place in Washoe and Placer Counties on the North Shore. Please recommend denial of these amendments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. Other members in the room that wish to comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, let's go to public comment online. Please go ahead and use the raise hand button at the bottom of your Zoom screen or dial star nine on your telephone and you'll be called upon by a TRPA staff member.
We have two hands raised so far online, Mr. Chair. The first hand up is Sophia Heidrick. Sophia, please unmute to make your comment.
Good afternoon, Advisory Planning Commissioners. My name is Sophia Heidrick, and I am the Advocacy Director for Mountain Area Preservation. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this item. I did submit a comment letter yesterday, and I hope you had a chance to take a look at it. The main point that I wanted to reiterate here is that less than a year ago, the TRPA approved the Phase Two housing amendments. And, you know, the whole point of that was to incentivize deed restricted housing for local workers by providing, among other things, more height and density in town centers. Now we have these amendments, which basically make it easier for local jurisdictions to go above TRPA's height and density requirements for non-deed restricted housing and other projects. And from our perspective, that just weakens those Phase Two incentives. Ms. Bettenger said earlier that the current process allows for spot zoning by having different standards in different areas or jurisdictions. And the best solution to that issue is just to maintain the TRPA standards rather than making so many exceptions. Those should just be the limits. I know you're not approving any projects today or amending area plans, but these amendments are related to future projects and area plans as today's proposal, as has been reiterated many times, it's in direct response to the City of South Lake Tahoe asking for density in centers and Douglas County looking for more height for Barton Hospital. And I did listen to the August fourteenth APC meeting where you heard from the City of South Lake Tahoe about how they need density because they need more moderate and market rate housing. I was watching the recording or I would have chimed in, but it was one of those moments that I just wanted to sort of shout at the screen and say that the Phase Two incentives are for moderate and market rate housing. It just has to be for locals. You can have as much density as you want for housing in town centers as long as it's for locals. Now the city wants density for market rate housing, and the only difference between what they're proposing and the Phase Two incentives is just that now the housing doesn't have to be for locals. It can be for second homeowners. It can be for second homeowners. Tell me how that will help to solve our housing crisis. Ultimately, the TRPA should uphold its height and density standards and not make it easier for local jurisdictions to change basin-wide regulations that were, one, put in place for a reason to minimize environmental impacts and, two, will water down the incentives that are on the table to get developers to build the housing that Tahoe actually needs, which is housing for local workers. These changes have been presented as these sort of clerical, run-of-the-mill clarifications or just a, you know, process formalization. I'm just asking all of you to think critically about what they will actually mean in practice. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Heidrick.
The next hand raised is Alan Miller. Alan, please unmute to make your comment.
Hello, I'm Alan Miller, civil engineer. And I just want to comment on the, the process here because I and many others submitted substantial comments. And in typical fashion, standard operating procedure, TRPA just ignores those comments. They never address them in writing. There's never any discussion about it. There's never any chance for the public to interact with the board members to say, oh yeah, we, we really understand your issue. We get it. We, no, everything just gets shined on. And, and then you're going to vote this up for approval by the governing board without answering or responding to any of those questions. Which is just about the worst process that I can imagine. When I worked for the state and we would issue permits and waste discharge requirements, we would put it out for public comment. And when the public comments came back, we didn't just ignore them. We actually spoke to the people about it and worked to resolve the issues. And TRPA just moves as a body to do whatever it wants, irrespective of the public, irrespective of the increased fire danger, irrespective of the environmental impact, which they're all too willing to ignore, because the project is deemed the fix by TRPA. Let's invite the multimillion-dollar developers in. They'll solve our problems for us. We can't deal with the existing environment. We don't know what to do. Yeah. And they've got the public here, well-informed people telling you what you need to do. And all you can do is ignore it. Well, bless you. Bless you for setting yourself up for some wonderful litigation. And I hope that is the result. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Mr. Chair, oh, one more hand just went up. Doug Flaherty, please unmute to make your comment.
Doug Flaherty, TahoeCleanAir.org. I've got a severe cold, so I'll be brief. My, my written comments speak for themselves. I think Mr. Miller makes a good point. You have a new Forest Service rep here. At least US Forest Service, when they get objections, they're required to, to respond to those objections. Under your current process, the public's cut out as far as any response to their specific comments. Further, I have to echo and embrace Matt's comments and Christina Hill's. You guys are doing it one more time, seeing how far you can push the envelope. And the only thing I have to say to that is you must love SEQA lawsuits. Maybe not on the Nevada side, but certainly what this is emerging into is a blatant a blatant attempt to, to increase public safety peril, density and height in town centers which serve as choke points. So shame on you guys. You know exactly what you're doing. These are standard amendments. You were told they're not. They are. And shame on you guys for going forward with this without, without proper increased public hearings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flaherty.
Mr. Chair, there are no other hands raised to make public comment.
All right. Thank you, Catherine. I'll go ahead and close public comment. Thank you all for weighing in. I will just say we, you know, APC members are forwarded all written public comments before the meeting. They are also posted on TRPA's webpage. Mr. Hester or Mr. Saint Michelle, do you want to talk about our responsibility to respond to written comments or just address that concern?
Yeah, we don't, you know, we, we receive public comments, written comments, comments here. We take them under, we can consider them. APC is here in our recommendation capacity, so we can all, that's part of our process, right? We can read those comments and we can talk about them here. If there's anything that anybody thinks is, is worth discussing or asking questions to, to John or the staff presenter, myself, that's what we're here to, to do. So that's, that's really how we deal with, with comments. We don't write written comment responses and answer everything not in a, you know, in a board and, and action like this. That's just not, you know, that's something that happens in SEQA and environmental review. You have certain times where you have to respond to comments in writing. That's, that's not really what we do. And I just, you know, I just want to respond a little bit, just we've all been, we've all been sort of talking about this this morning and, and saying it. Just to reiterate after the comments, this doesn't change the discretionary, the future discretionary approval that's required for these additional height or additional density. Any of those changes, it's, we're not, we're not getting out of that or, or skipping that process. So the discretionary approval, when, when these debates are very appropriate to happen, those are still, you know, well into the, there's, they're still there. We're not, we're not removing that from the process.
If I can, excuse me, add to that. We are prohibited from, just so the public knows, prohibited from responding to comments on non-agenda items, so we don't. Graham's right. Of course, I wouldn't say our general counsel's not right, but we do take into consideration input all through the process and, and one of the things that we do here, I, you've done before. One of the things that happens at the governing board is we get asked, are there responses to the specific comments that you'd like to make? And so I would like to, whether, before you ask me, there's a few I'd like to make that I think will help set context for the new members, but also maybe hopefully for the public. So there was some confusion about how the area plans fit with the regional plan and all that. So let me try to set some context. The area plans were set up in 2012 to allow local governments who are closer to their communities to provide more specificity and, and have some variation. They don't, they still have to be in compliance with the regional plan. So if we have a standard that applies regionally, they still have to be in compliance with that. Just like county and city laws, those of you who work county or city, they're subject to state law. Area plans are subject to the TRPA plan and code. Jermaine, I think to this particular example is you all know that state laws often have enabling legislation that allows locals to take specific actions within parameters of that state law. For example, the law that allows you to do general plans, doesn't say what your general plan has to say, but does say what it has to cover and does set some parameters. Same thing here. TRPA has the authority to be more or less specific if we want to and adopt plans with or without it being in an area plan. And that remains the way it is. And that, I think, if, to clarify, that is exactly what we did on the housing amendments. And we've made that a requirement that local governments put that into area plans, or we will. And we've made, we've made the housing amendments in Phase Two an option for local governments to put it in their area plan to meet those same objectives any way they want to, as long as they meet those objectives, or we will put our standards in place. And that's pretty much how states and local governments work. So we, we will never, ever be able to say no one can propose an amendment to an area plan or no applicant can propose a project. Whether we like it or not, we have to entertain those. That's due process. That's in the US Constitution. So we will, you will sometimes get things that you think are way out there and we might too. But we will bring those to you in the public process because that's what we're supposed to do. So I hope that sets some context for everybody. If it doesn't, I'm sorry and I'm happy to chat afterwards. But anyway, I just think sometimes we don't see the big picture.
Yeah, thanks, John. I mean, to me, these amendments make sense. We should lay out the process and set the parameters by which projects are, projects are measured against. Try to avoid one-offs. You know, I appreciate, I appreciate these amendments, kind of like Mr. Young said. I, I see the value in them. I know we want to move, let's take a couple more questions. I'll go to Mr. Drew and then Ms. Carr. I see you have your hand raised. So we'll go to you next.
I, I just, there are, Jason Drew, for the record, we're conflating multiple topics this morning. I find it very confusing. And so we need to clarify those before I feel comfortable, you know, taking action on this particular item. So I want to just clarify what I think I understood from the staff report, what we talked about this morning and the numerous comments that have been submitted. So as stated, the proposed code amendments are only associated with a process change. So currently, if an area plan amendment is desired, that amendment has to be brought forward to the APC, which then makes a recommendation to the governing board that has to be approved. And it really has a two-step process because you have to approve the amendment. It's the, the slide that was up earlier. So you have to, and they usually, functionally, they happen together. So the approval of the amendment to the area plan and then subsequently there are changes to the code. What's proposed is simply that the area plan amendments would come forward. They would be reviewed by this body. A recommendation would continue to be made to the governing board and the governing board would approve those amendments. That's why I have more, but I want to stop there and just make sure I'm, I'm, we're clear on that.
Correct.
Okay. So moving forward, if an area plan has already been approved and it included height or density standards that are beyond what was shown, they would have had to have gone through that two-step process and had those approved.
Yes, under the current process.
Correct. If this amendment moves forward in the future, if an area plan requires an amendment to have additional height and density, they would still have to come to this body and to the governing board, but the approval would be only of the area plan amendment. There wouldn't then have to be a subsequent amendment of Chapters 31 and 37.
Correct.
So there is no change in the review of that. It's a change in having two functionally approvals at the same time for the same amendment.
Correct.
So if a project is proposed in the future within an area plan that requires additional height and density beyond what has already been approved for that area plan, that area plan would then have to be amended and it would have to come forward to this body and the governing board for approval.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Drew. I think we're good on that. Let's go to Ms. Carr and then we'll try to get to these motions. Ms. Carr, on to you.
Thank you. I too am struggling with this a little bit and the conversation has really helped me, especially the last ones helped me to wrap my head a little bit deeper around it. And, and much like John was describing, there are corollaries to other regulatory processes. So I've been trying to equate this to my experience here at the state of Nevada in how it sort of relates to like our enabling statutes and then the regulations that provide more detail for implementing those statutes. And then sometimes we get into guidance that helps to clarify the regulations. And so I see some comparators here where, you know, outside the compact, the, the regional plan is kind of like our statutes that give the authority to do certain things. And, and then the amendments to Chapter 13 of the regional plan or the Code of Ordinances, excuse me, are sort of similar to our regulations where we try to get more specific about what we can or cannot do within our authorities. And, and that's where I'm getting a little stuck because we've got really good conversation today about good things that we'd like to see. Stair stepping the side boundaries of area of, of these, the tourist cores or town centers, feathering, whatever you want to call it, basically to not have a, a, a high-rise building right next to open space is what I gathered from that discussion. We heard, you know, comments about the Phase Two housing amendments, which I thought were very good observations. So what I, what my difficulty is, is how are those good ideas and good guidance incorporated into institutional knowledge? And the closer I get to the end of my career, the more I worry about transition of institutional knowledge. One of the public commenters had gone back and looked at prior minutes and was citing them. How often do we know where to look in prior minutes for, you know, the November 13th discussion of 2024 about what is good about designing area plans? So I think what I would like to see or hear is where that, those, those good practices, those best practices in, in designing area plans and designing design standards, where do those, where can those be espoused? Because clearly this planning commission has opinions on that and they're very good opinions. But do they live in findings one, three, and nine? Or do these amendments to Chapter 13 need to go a little deeper that say, you know, you can do this, you can do this, but area plan development should consider X, Y, and Z in development of, of these area plans to, to provide the future generations of us more substance in what they're looking at. I fully believe that the environmental checklist for this action is accurate because this is, I agree, a process. And so, you know, basically checking no on the checklist is reasonable because of this action that we're being asked to take. But then it gets pushed down to the next level of analysis of the area plan. And then when we are reviewing area plans, we are also reminded that nothing that we are approving in an area plan is project-specific and, you know, certain things have to be at the project level. But we don't see projects. So how do we provide that guidance and that institutional, how do we memorialize that institutional desire to see certain things? So that the people that are approving the projects have the best set of tools that they can to make good decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Does TRPA staff want to respond to that?
I'll try. And I'll try to use analogies that might relate to water quality, environmental protection at the state. When you approve a regulation at the state level, you don't necessarily design, I'm just thinking of a treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant. You don't necessarily approve the design of that wastewater treatment plant, but you approve the standards that it has to meet. For example, I know the state's looking at, state of Nevada is looking at treated affluent being treated to A-plus standards for reintroduction into groundwater basins. I don't think you're going to, as a result of that process, say, this is exactly how you design a treatment plant for that, but you're going to say what the standards are. I don't know that, you know, if that's a good analogy or not, but what I can tell you about how we do it here and how a lot of local governments do it in the planning realm is we have the policies in the plan, we have the Code of Ordinances. That gets more specific when you have area plans and code that enables, that implements the area plans. And then we also have administrative interpretations. When something comes up that is not clear in the code and we, for example, does, I'm trying to think of a good example. Do, does the credit for traffic generation transfer with a development right? We didn't address that in the development rights amendments. But we've had that question. So we'll write an administrative interpretation. Next time we're working on development rights, if we think it's important enough, we'll put that in the code. So I think that's, that's kind of the process. I, you know, to be honest, Jennifer, I don't think institutional knowledge in any organization gets truly captured the way it ideally should, but that's, if you have the solution to that one, I want to be your business partner.
Alyssa, you want to supplement?
Yeah, I would also just add that we have what we call our area plan handbook. That's a forty two page document on our website that we share with the local jurisdictions whenever they're, you know, developing a new area plan or amending their existing area plan. It is not, you know, it's not our code, but it is a place where we can capture some of that institutional knowledge and considerations that we want the local jurisdictions to keep in mind as they're doing these amendments. For instance, you know, incentives for phase two, making sure that we're not watering down those incentives.
Chair, could I follow up?
Uh, yes, go ahead, Ms. Carr, and then Hitch will go to you.
Thanks. That's, that's, that's all, that's helpful. And your guidance documents for developing area plans, sounds like another piece of the puzzle. But I imagine that can be amended and redrafted and edited by TRPA leadership and staff. And hopefully it would be based on this discussion. But again, wondering if maybe it, some of these concepts are better as incorporated into chapter thirteen. Like building height above fifty six feet may be approved in a town center of an area plan further provided one, two, and three. And considering, you know, the impact of height on area, town center, boundary properties or considering the, the priority of phase two amendments or, you know, and, and trying to fit some of those important concepts into chapter thirteen that then waterfall down into other processes. But that's just an idea of how to potentially get some of that institutional knowledge and discussion incorporated in a public way. But I will, I'll stop there. Thanks.
Thanks, Jennifer. Hitch, do you want to?
Oh, yeah. Someone has actually gone through two area plan adoption process and we're currently in our our third one, the midtown area plan. I think some of that institutional knowledge is already built into chapter thirteen of the TRPA code. I mean, it's specifically, I mean, we always expand on chapter thirteen, but it talks about things like, you know, about building height and ensuring that buildings do not project above tree canopy, forest line, ridge line that talks about building heights or two stories. Should have transition, transition height limits, we should have buffers, we should take into account adjacent residential areas when we increase height and increase density. Comes to building side, it talks about skills, the structures and compatibility with existing plan uses in area. It talks about user perceptions. So a lot of the institutional knowledge, I think, is already baked into the chapter thirteen code. They said we probably could do better. But these are the things as a planner, we go out with these standards and we talk to the community. How do you feel about billing height and billing design standards? And then we develop a plan as reflective of the desired land use pattern and community character that our community wants. So I think, I think the, the, the foundation is ready, is ready there.
Thanks, John. That's helpful. And yeah, chapter thirteen can always be amended. And I'm sure as, you know, part of your job duties, Alyssa, that's on your plate to continually evaluate whether that's needed or not, among other duties. So that's good conversation. Final thoughts, Mr. Drake?
I have one discrete question. In our, in the proposed change findings, one, three, and nine from chapter thirty seven, TRPA code on height would be the guidelines for local jurisdictions proposing area plan amendments. Are those the same objective standards by which we review area plan amendments today? Or are we taking all nine criteria and considering them? Is this a subset of the current criteria used? It would be what is expected of local jurisdictions bringing an area plan amendment? That's my.
We, so we don't, when a local jurisdiction comes forward with additional building height, we wouldn't automatically apply those findings today. We looked through the, our, the findings that we have and we felt like those were appropriate findings to require the area plans to adopt in their language for any additional height over fifty six feet because they relate directly to our scenic threshold. So today they would not be subject to those findings. We're proposing that they would. Does that answer your question?
Let me, okay.
Okay.
I can add one little nuance to that, Kevin. I can't help myself. An earlier version of this, we said all projects have to meet those. But what we said is those have to be in the area plan and the local government has to make sure all projects meet those. So that's a little nuance that we wanted to make sure, because they are in our code and they will stay in our code. And we wanted to make sure that they got in the area plan code as well. It's a subtle thing, but you see, it kind of is, gives us a redundancy that's, if we're not reviewing something and they are, they still have to make those same findings. Hope I didn't confuse you by adding that.
Okay. Thank you all for the discussion. And thank you for the public comment. We have three motions on our screen for this item. If there's no further comments, would anyone care to make a motion on this item? Could you turn your mic on, John?
I can motion to recommend approval of the required findings attachment four, including a fine of no significant effect for the adoption of amendments to the code ordinance, chapter thirteen, and the community design goals and policies of the regional plan.
Thank you, Mr. Hitchcock. Attachment A, just to correct that. Anyone want to second that motion?
Second, Eric Young.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions on that motion? Tracy, I'm going to go to you for a roll call vote on motion number one.
Mr. Judge?
Yes.
Mr. McNamara? Ms. Marillas O'Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Hitchcock?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Ms. Chandler?
Yes.
Ms. Wydra?
Yes.
Mr. Tishera?
Yes.
Ms. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Oling?
No.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Chief Stephen?
Yes.
Ms. Stoller?
Yes.
Ms. Cyber?
I'm going to abstain on this one.
And Mr. Ferry?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, the motion passes.
Thank you, Tracy. Okay, anyone care to make the second motion? Could you turn your microphone on? Sorry.
I take motion to recommend approval and adoption of ordinance twenty twenty four to be determined, attachment C, amending ordinance twenty twenty three dash oh three as amended for the adoption of amendments to the community design goals and policies of the regional plan.
Thank you, John. Anyone care to second that?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Tracy, back to you for a roll call vote on motion number two.
Ms. Stoller?
Yes.
Ms. Cyber?
Abstain.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Chief Stephen?
Yes.
Mr. Tishera?
Yes.
Ms. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Oling?
No.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Ms. Chandler?
Yes.
Ms. Wydra?
Yes.
Mr. McNamara? Ms. Marillas O'Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Hitchcock?
Yes.
Mr. Judge?
Yes.
Mr. Ferry?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, the motion passes.
Thank you, Tracy. Motion number three.
I take motion recommend approval and adoption of ordinance twenty twenty four to be numbered to be determined, attachment D, amending ordinance eighty seven dash nine as amended for the adoption of amendments to TRPA code ordinance, chapter thirteen.
Thank you, John.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Young. And back to you, Tracy, for motion number three.
Mr. McNamara? Mr. Judge?
Yes.
Ms. Marillas O'Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Ms. Chandler?
Yes.
Mr. Hitchcock?
Yes.
Ms. Wydra?
Yes.
Mr. Tishera?
Yes.
Ms. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Oling?
No.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Chief Stephen?
Yes.
Ms. Stoller?
Yes.
Ms. Cyber?
Abstain.
And Mr. Ferry?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, the motion passes.
Thank you, Tracy. Thank you all for a good discussion on that item. Thank you, Ms. Bettinger. Members of the public, please stay involved. It sounds like this is going to RPC on the twentieth next week and then on to governing board. So more public hearings on these proposed amendments to come. Okay. Thank you all. Let's move on now to item six, which is planning matters. We're going to go to item six A. This is a presentation on the Lake Tahoe Dam investigatory work by the Bureau of Reclamation, Region Ten. This is in Tahoe City, Placer County. It's on a few assessors parcel numbers, zero nine four twenty two ninety oh three three zero nine four five forty zero zero eight and zero nine four five forty zero one seven. Information can be found on page one zero five of your packets. And as a reminder to the public, since this item is informational only, we will hear any public comments on this topic at the final public comment period of our meeting. And I'm going to pass this on to Tiffany Good with TRPA to present. Welcome.
Thank you so much. Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the Commission. My name is Tiffany Good. I am a principal planner with TRPA's permitting and compliance department. And I am here today to kick off this informational presentation on the Lake Tahoe Dam rehabilitation feasibility study. It's a mouthful. Next slide, please. And I just want to start with a few introductions. Presenting with me here today is Scott Schoenfeld, sitting next to me, operations and maintenance division manager at the Bureau of Reclamation out of the La Houghton area office. And we also have Heather Waldrop in the audience with us from Stan Tech. And the Stan Tech staff have been providing technical environmental support for the feasibility study. Next slide, please. So our agenda today is going to include some very interesting background and history of the Lake Tahoe Dam. And then we'll round out with a discussion of the details of the feasibility study itself. As you will hear in the presentation, we're bringing this item to you all today due to the nature and the location of the work that's proposed to be done. I'm sure you're all familiar with the Lake Tahoe Dam in Tahoe City. The dam has a vital role for water supply and is also a pretty iconic structure in the basin. And while it's currently safe and functional, I just want to reiterate that it is currently safe and functional. It is also very old and the Bureau of Reclamation needs to do some investigatory work to understand what may be done to rehabilitate the dam in the future. So as Scott will talk about in more detail, the first phase of investigatory work is to take some concrete coring samples from the dam. And then the results of those samples will actually inform the subsequent geotechnical investigation. And ultimately, and potentially a proposed project to rehabilitate the dam. Next slide, please. And before handing over the presentation to Scott, I just want to clarify what TRPA's role is in this initial investigation. So La Houghton, the Tahoe Office in La Houghton is actually acting as the lead agency on the concrete coring per our existing MOU, TRPA's MOU with La Houghton. So the BOR has been working directly with La Houghton on that, on that work. The BOR received a notice of applicability and has submitted a pre-construction notification to the Army Corps for the work and has received permitting permitting, they've received their permit from La Houghton. And so they're moving forward with, through all of those channels. So for TRPA purposes, the concrete coring is actually an exempt activity, meaning it does not require a TRPA permit. And all the temporary measures that are implemented as a part of the activity are actually put into place to ensure that the activity remains an exempt activity and does not have any adverse impacts. And then the subcyclical geotechnical investigatory work will work much the same way and will be processed by La Houghton consistent with the MOU. TRPA will likely have permitting responsibility for any proposed dam rehabilitation project in the future. And so I'm going to wrap up my piece for now, but I'm going to stick around if there's questions and hand it over to Scott.
Hello, my name is Scott Schoenfeld. Again, I am the O and M Division Manager for the La Houghton Basin Area Office out of Carson City. Responsible for Tahoe Dam as well as all the, all the federal facilities on the Truckee River itself. Next. So I wanted to just give you a little history of Lake Tahoe Dam. Don't know how many people know much about the history. It's been there for a long time. Ultimately, it was constructed in nineteen thirteen. It is eighteen feet tall, not a huge, huge facility, hundred and nine feet wide. And it controls the top six point one feet of Lake Tahoe Dam. As she said, there's no public, there's no immediate threat. We do, just to understand, we do, every year we do annual site inspections every four years. We do a more detailed inspection, inspection out of someone from our Sacramento office. And then every eight years, every other four years, I guess, every eight years, we do what we call a comprehensive review that we really look at. How it was built back then, how we would do things different, you know, and we do safety of dam. We look at it in a safety of dam. So we do look at it a lot, but it is, it is crumbling a bit. So next. So a little history real quick. This is, this is the La Houghton Basin Area Office. It's our area that we oversee. And this project really, Lake Tahoe Dam was initially thought of as part of the Newlands Project, which is out in Fallon area. Next. So a little bit of history. So there was a dam that was started in the eighteen sixties on the Truckee River. The Newlands Project, as I said, reclamation came about in nineteen oh two. One of the first projects was the Newlands Project. And it was to, reclamation's role back in those days was really, we were trying to help bring people to the West. And as part of that, our goal was to, we call it reclaim the land, basically bring water to where it needs so we can farm, so people could actually had a, had a reason to come. That was a lot of the reason why we were there. But nineteen oh two, one of the places that we saw was Fallon. And they looked, they looked, USGS did some studies, looked at a lot of places and the biggest bang for the buck was looking at Lake Tahoe Dam. They, they saw that as a, as a location for, for what, there was already a dam there. They looked at how much they could do. They figured out how much water they could get. And so we started, we actually claimed water to Lake Tahoe like in nineteen oh five. And so we started negotiating with a local company, which was the, what, Truckee River General Electric Company. There were some others before that that already owned a dam in the, in place. And their interest was really, they had some power plants downstream, five power plants downstream, but that, that was their interest. Our interest was obviously in controlling the water for future as a storage. So we negotiated with them basically between nineteen oh nine through nineteen fifteen. And in the meantime, we decided together basically to rebuild Lake Tahoe Dam back in the, back then. So nineteen, nineteen thirteen was, Tahoe Dam was completed. Nineteen fifteen, we completed what we call the Truckee River General Electric Decree. So it was a judgment, basically. But in it, we got, we got access to the land. We got access to control the dam. We got an easement around the site for future, future use. What they got was a certain flow in the river, five hundred CFS basically in the summer, four hundred in the winter. But here's, so that, and then we had, there's been lots of litigation that's gone through the lake. We'll look at a little bit more, but ultimately, yeah, next chapter, our next, next slide, we'll keep going. So, sorry. So you can see the yellow line basically is the easement that we have. And it is an exclusive right to the land to basically do what we want with it. You can see Lake Tahoe there, Fanny Bridge out in front of it, but this is what we control. It's not in fee. So the land was actually owned by the General Electric Company at the time. It has changed ownership over time. So there are different parcels in that area that we own. Own, there are, as you can see, there has been development in places that are in our land that we didn't see, just so you know. But that's basically what we own, what we, what we have a right to, put it that way. Next. So this is Lake Tahoe Dam. As I said, it was built between nineteen oh nine and nineteen thirteen, controls six point one feet. That is seven hundred and forty-four thousand acre feet, which is eighty or seventy-two percent of all the storage we have on the Truckee River is out of this facility right here. We have seventeen cast iron gates, wooden structure, structure on top. Uh, next. So operations of Lake Tahoe, as I said, there's been a lot of litigation. Rumor has it, it's like per, per mile of river, it's the most litigated in the country. So we've had litigation basically since, since nineteen fifteen and it's one of the, it started kind of with Tahoe area shoreline owners back in those days. They were worried about it raising too tall. And so that's how we got kind of that six point one feet. The sixty-two twenty-nine point one is the maximum level that we need to try to keep it to. It's not always possible, so it's not a, uh, it's not an absolute. It's, it's what we have to try to keep it to. But you can see all the operational considerations. We have the Truckee River General Electric, we talked about the Truckee River Agreement, which was based on litigation, which is really how we operate the Truckee River. The Ordus Decree adjudicated the river in Nevada, not in California, in Nevada. We have a Tahoe Proster Exchange that determines how we, we release water out of Tahoe. We have a, now we have the Truckee River Agreement. On the right, you can see kind of how we determine our flows out of Lake Tahoe. When we look at flows out of Lake Tahoe or when we go to Boca first. And so all of that is how we operate Lake Tahoe Dam. And all of it is operated or is determined by a federal water master that works for the Ordus Court. We, as our reclamation, all we do is we change the gates to achieve those flows that the water master tells us. Just understand that. So we're not the ones dictating the flows. It is a water master based on all of these considerations. Next. So we talked about the Truckee River Operating Agreement. Originally, TROA was how we operated it, but California was not part of TROA. The Pyramid Lake Pai tribe, who is at the end of, of the Truckee River, was not part of the Truckee River Agreement. And so in nineteen ninety, as part of, we call it Public Law one oh one six eighteen, the, one of the requirements was that it was a settlement, settlement act. We had to negotiate a new Truckee River Operating Agreement. So that was in the early nineties. It took us till, what, two thousand and eight to actually come up with the language. And then it went through litigation for another eight, ten years. So in, I think in two thousand seventeen is when it actually started, was, took, came into effect. But one of the big things, just to understand that Truckee River Agreement looked at the reservoirs up above all individually. One of the things that the Truckee River Operator Agreement does is it kind of looks at them together much more. So they're all kind of one big reservoir. We can, we can move water to be more, much more beneficial to downstream users. But, uh, next. So a lot of it is just telling you how important it is to, I guess, Northern Nevada and the Truckee River, even in California now. How important the, the release is out of Lake Tahoe and how important Lake Tahoe is to the water supply. So we are doing a feasibility study. And so this kind of tells you the process of how we're going to do this feasibility study. Right now, we're developing internal initial options on how we would rehabilitate it, whether it's pure rehabilitating it where it is, removing, replacing. We don't know. Everything's on the, on the, on the table on what we might do. Down the road, you can see, once we figure out, and part of this is what we're talking about now, is doing some geotechnical and concrete condition assessment. And then as we go on, we will develop more criteria into how we're going to do. We're going to develop alternatives. And then we're going to do NEPA, SEQA, TRPI compliance down the road at, when we figure out all alternatives that we're going to look at. That's kind of the process. Uh, next. So here's some pictures of the deterioration, deteriorating concrete. So you can see the spalling that we've seen. You can see the rebar. Uh, this is on the downstream side. If you've gone there, you can see it. So it's, it's, uh, it's, it's a need of looking at, right? Uh, so next chapter. So here's the upstream side. So one of the issues we have, you can see, this is, so it was built over a couple of years. And so you can see the bottom half was built one year. And then where you can see there's a line that was kind of the cold joint that was created when they put the second layer on and it's disbonded now. So it, it could potentially during an earthquake or something shifts with water behind it. We are a little bit concerned with that. Not, not really concerned because it's up a way. So there's not a lot of pressure on this facility. I mean, that's kind of where we're, we're struggling with what to do a little bit because it could, it could last another fifty years. Honestly, we just don't know, right? But reclamation, the way we look at things, we look at, we, we look at risks is how we determine things and we look at downstream risks a lot. There's not a huge amount of downstream risks, but there is some. Right? But at the same time, there's just not a lot of pressure on it. So we're not really concerned with it, with it, you know, falling apart tomorrow, right? We have time. But we did get some bipartisan infrastructure funding under the aging infrastructure. What's better than Tahoe as an aging infrastructure look? And so we got some funding to go look at this as part of that. Um, next chap, next. And so, as I said, uh, so this is Lake Tahoe. We, we'd like to look at this and, and really improve and look at our gate operations. In seventeen, we had some issues with one of the gates that we could not close all the way because we had some spalling contract, concrete that fell down behind it. We were able to clean that up. Once the water fell down below the rim. Um, it is over a hundred and ten years old and we just want to maintain or enhance the safety. Just make sure it stays safe as we move forward. Uh, next. Yeah. So, so we are doing some concrete conditioning. We're going to do some coring. Probably here, we're, we're applying and hopefully doing it first part of December. So people will be out there. We want to make sure people know that we're going to be out there. It's not a big issue. We're just doing some investigative stuff. Likely, we talk about fall, we're doing some geotechnical permitting. And we're going to do some geotechnical cores, likely next April is what it's looking like. Um, next. Um, here's all the agencies we've already kind of contacted. So we're just keeping people in the loop, letting people know what's going on, trying to be as transparent as we can. Um, next. So are there any questions? I have a couple more slides after this too, but if you have any questions, feel free. I went through that pretty quick, but if not, we'll go to the next slide. So here's the, the, the dam itself. We're going to be doing the coring on that lower, the downstream side of it to, we did some corings in two thousand and four to kind of look at it. We're, we're basically going to do the exact same coring that we did back then in nearly the same locations to see how much it's deteriorated in the last twenty years. Based on some of that, we will determine how or we might proceed, how we would proceed, whether it's we can actually rehabilitate it or there, we have to do something more of a replacement. Um, next. And then I, as I said, in, uh, next April, we're going to do some bore based geotechnical investigation. And depending on what the, what the concrete cores tell us, we're either going to do five, we're going to do five corings, likely. So three of them are upstream. That is a location that we would consider potentially as a replacement if we needed to replace on it. It made sense to move it upstream. Otherwise, we're going to do more, uh, just upstream of the dam itself that would let us know about replacing it in, in the same location or just even rehabilitation, other things like that. So those are the two things that we're going to be doing here in the next six months. So that's the presentation. I don't know if you have any questions on any of it, like if you want to know more about operations, if you want to know about any of the agreements, anything, feel free. I'm here.
Great. Thanks a lot, Scott. Pretty fascinating history. Seriously. Yeah. No, thank you so much. Um, okay. I'll go to my fellow APC members for any questions or comments. Stacy? Yes.
I just have a quick question. And you probably don't know the answer yet, but the, the structure, the roof structure, you know, it's sort of a neat little unit, right? There's the history reading along as you walk along the bridge. And do you anticipate that being reconstructed or it will depend on your findings of the, the actual concrete and what you have to do?
You know, I think all of that's going to, it's all going to be term, determined down the road.
Okay.
I think we will have to do, we will have to comply with the National Historic Preservation Act, right? So regardless of what we do, we're going to have to do some mitigation if we choose to do, to tear it down. So it all will come down to what makes sense. Likely, I don't know, but, but likely this has worked for a hundred years. Likely, we're going to do something very similar. Right? It's not going to be something totally different, we don't think, but that's what the study is going to help us do, determine. If that answers your question.
Well, you, you hit it. My next question was going to be about the historic.
Yeah.
Like, is there any, you know, I mean, obviously the structural element. We have to do that. But if you were going to take
I think, I, I think the tough thing is, and I'm not an archaeologist and I'm not a historian. You know, it's been interesting, um, listening to it a little bit because what we think is historic, especially being local, is not always historic when you're thinking of the state, right? Is it unique? Is it, is there some, it's really cool thing that happened there, right? That made it historic, other than the fact that it's a hundred years old. Right? All those things go into what we would do with it. It is, I know one of the things that we have found out on the cultural side is it's very important, that area, way more important than I ever thought to the Washoe Tribe. Right? That's a really important area that I was not aware of, right? And obviously we didn't, we didn't consult with them back in nineteen oh nine. Clearly, we have to consult with them this time. We have already with what we've been doing. So we're doing that as well. But it is interesting to understand how we would go forward. And I think all this stuff that we're going to do is help, is going to inform us how we want to do it and what makes sense.
And then my last question is, you know, understanding this may or may not go through an environmental process. But the public process, like how, you know, do you anticipate doing kind of a slideshow like this?
So, um, you know, that'll be down the road. I mean, I don't know, Heather, she's a, Heather's here. She's kind of in, going to be in charge of a lot of that NEPA SEQA. We will be doing, no matter what we, as part of the feasibility study that we're doing, we will be doing NEPA. We, there will be a SEQA component. If that's not our decision, like we have to do NEPA because that's, it's our action, SEQA, TRPA's compliance, that's your guys' actions. So there will be, there will definitely be a portion of that depending on whether it's an EA or an EIS will determine the level of, but likely, no matter what, we will be doing public meetings. I mean, the public's going to be aware what we're doing. It's not going to be a secret by any means. Right? Uh, we want to keep people informed. It's, it's, it's been there for a long time. It's, it is important to people in Tahoe and we, and it's important to us as well. So.
Yeah, I think that's really important.
Sorry, just to reiterate, that's, that's one of the reasons why we are here for this initial phase because it's a high profile location and there's going to be obvious work being done there. And and while they're following their NEPA and La Houghton with SEQA, the processes, these are, these are exempt activities with TRPA. But we wanted to get it in front of, you know, appropriate stakeholders, uh, just to kind of start the process. And then with the larger potential, uh, project, it would go through the, you know, NEPA, SEQA, TRPA joint process.
Thanks, Tiffany. Uh, Mr. Drake, did you?
Yeah.
We'll just keep going this way. We'll go to you next, James.
All right, now. Thank. Uh, there we go. Thanks for the presentation. Um, this is up in my neck of the woods. Have you reached out proactively to the Truckee River Waterhead Council about this project yet? I know eventually I'm sure you will, but have you yet?
Trying to think if we have talked to them yet. No. I have, I have, I have talked to the Truckee River Basin Water Group. So same group. So I do talk to them. Yeah, they are, they are a member of that group. So I have brought it up to that meeting. So.
Thanks, Kevin. Mr. McNamara.
Any concerns? Uh, I, I know you touched on it about seismic concerns. I know being built a hundred ten years ago, that wasn't probably up to standards. How risky or are we exposed to any risk on that?
So actually, we are looking at that. We do have a safety of dam recommendation. So we'll be looking at it in a different, so we have a couple of different processes going on, actually, at the same time. We're doing this. At a feasibility level, we also on the dam safety side are looking at, have some things that we're looking at as well. And that being one of them, really that dispondent joints, one of them. One of the things that we're worried about that we've, we look at ways, the probable, probable failure modes is what we look at. And really, there aren't a bunch of them because it's such a small, it really is such a small structure that, but one of the big things is a way, is a earthquake in the middle of the dam, in the middle of the lake that created a seash wave that would go over the top of it. That's our PMF, honest, our probable failure mode, actually, that we are concerned with the most. And we don't even know what that, but we, we can't even determine what the likelihood of that is. I mean, the biggest thing to understand about Lake Tahoe or, and the dam itself is really, we are limited by how much can be released by how much it comes in. So, I mean, it's like in Reno, it's not really a risk. There's no real risk in Reno because we won't even get to our level, our flood levels in Reno. If this goes down, you're talking three or four thousand CFS is all that's going to go down the river because it's just the, just how it exits there, you know, so we're safe in that way.
What about litigation from the Washoe Tribe or any other environmental group? I know it's a big thing in the West to re, to remove dams. I know this is no exception.
Um, that's a good question. I don't, I, I think they want to re, remove dams for different reasons. I mean, usually it's a, it's a because of the fish, right? We will be looking at, we will be consulting with Fish and Wildlife Service as part of this project. Uh, probably be consulting with California Fish and Game to some degree too, on what's up there. We are, as, as reclamation, one of our, one of my big, big roles nowadays is La Houghton Cutra Trout. Most of my facilities now are to help the La Houghton Cutra Trout and the Queeque down on the Lower Truckee River, just so you know. Right? The, I, we know that US Fish and Wildlife would love to see the La Houghton Cutra Trout make it all the way back up to Tahoe. So we will be looking at, at that as, as part of it. Whether we, who knows how long that's going to be. Whether there's fish passage or whether we look at fish passage, that's going to be something we look at down the road. But that would be, in my mind, the reason. I don't, I think it would be hard to take, that's just my opinion. This is my opinion thing. With all the litigation and all the things that are already in place, I think it'd be hard to get rid of Tahoe, honestly.
Uh, Ms. Cyber.
Hi, thank you. I'm going to make a slightly off the wall comment slash request here in bringing up the conversations about the fish passage. If it turns out down the line that we are, you know, going in that, in If it turns out down the line that we are, you know, going in that, in that direction to try to provide additional fish passage. Those types of things, I would, um, encourage you to take a look at some of the really cool, um. Technologies that they have out there, the one that I'm thinking of in particular, that I think would be. Really cool, if any of the, like this could happen anywhere on the lake, is, um, someplace in Eastern Europe, some, they have a big dam. And they want to have the fish go through, right? But they can't have it open all the time. And so they figured out that the, the fish were coming there and they were waiting, they had specific times that it was opening. And so all the predators would come and just wait there for, for it to open, and then they would just snatch them all up. And so what they developed is they actually have this, they call it a fish doorbell. But it's something that is, it's online, you can go online right now and you can go look at this place. And you can sit there and you can watch and see if the right fish comes along, and you can push the button that says, open it, to let the fish through. So it's like an interactive thing with the public, um, so I know that's, that's a little. Maybe, maybe a little much for, for this structure, but just, uh, on the subject of. Keeping in mind some of those maybe innovative things, if we do end up doing work, that would be the time to do those kinds of things. And include it in the environmental analysis, so thank you.
Now's the time to get all ideas out. Fish doorbell. Uh, Mr. Young, I'll go to you, I see your hand is raised.
Thank you. Uh, I, I'd say they did a pretty good job back when they built this one, if it's, uh. You know, over a hundred years old and only needed minimal maintenance really over the years. Um, so good on them for what they did, but I'm, I'm curious if. A new, um, facility has a. Has a design timeline built into it, uh, it would, would a new dam be engineered? With an expected, uh, lifespan? Uh, i- is that, is that how they're designed, um, uh, nowadays? I don't think that when they designed this one, they said, boy, let's try and, you know, make sure we get a hundred fifty years out of it, but. Um, my understanding is that a lot of facilities now are designed with a specific lifespan in mind. And I'm just curious if that's true, and if it is, um, would it apply to a new dam at Tahoe? Thank you.
You know, that's a good question, and to be honest with you, I don't know the answer. Uh, um, we don't, I don't believe, I don't, we don't, reclamation, everything we do is, is really risk-based. We don't. I say this, but I, I, we don't want our dams, uh, we look at them being there forever. We don't look at a dam being there, oh, in a hundred years, we're gonna have to replace it, that may be the reality of it, but we look much more long-term than that. And I mean, it, it's one of the good things about working for the federal government, honestly, is. We're not limited by profits, right? So we wanna do it right, a- and honestly, we wanna look at it right. And we wanna, we do value planning, and when we do value planning, it's not always about, or value engineering, we don't. It's not about trying to find cheaper pricing, it's, it's trying to find benefits, right? That we're seeing all the benefits, maybe we can find a cheaper price, but, but if we find something that costs more, but we see this benefit, we will do it. You know, and so that's one of the cool things about the way we look at things, which the private side doesn't, I've been on that side too, right? So if that answers your question as much as I can.
Oh, thanks, Matt, appreciate that, I appreciate the, the presentation, that was, that was, uh, pleasant, thank you.
Thanks Eric. Any final thoughts? Thank you so much for coming and talking to us and educating the public, and look forward to you continuing to do that.
Thank you for having me, I appreciate the opportunity.
Yeah, it's fascinating history, something that affects all of us, so thanks a lot. Just as a reminder, we're gonna hold public comment until the last public comment period, as that was informational only. And I'm gonna move us on now to item, thank you, Mr. Drew, we'll see you later. I'll move us to item six B. This is the Nevada Energy Resilience Corridor Project. Information can be found on page one hundred and ten of your packet. As a reminder to the public, again, since this is informational only, we'll hold public comments on this item. Until the final public comment period, and I'm gonna pass this to Mr. Hester to present.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, while I'm introducing this, go ahead, come on up. Either whatever works for you guys. Some of you may recall that, uh, Mr. Olling has exercised extreme patience as he asked for this. I wanna say last year.
Yeah, I think it was just, it was November of last year, so it's been, it's been years since we've been talking.
So, um, it's taken us a while, but we finally got here. Um, this presentation is about the resilience corridor that NB Energy has just been working on. Um, but it's also about other activities they've taken in the basin. And I think it's something that, as we talk about other items like forest thinning and, and, uh. Responding to hazards that we can expect with warming and, uh, the true, our forests being so. Modinous, uh, these are, this is a great example of trying to address that, and so I think that's why. Mr. Olling asked us to put this on the agenda, and I'll, I'll turn it to you if you have any other introductory com, comments. Otherwise, uh, turn it over to Bill Morgan from Nevada Energy.
Yeah, uh, thank, thank you, John, I appreciate it, and I really wanted to thank NB Energy, uh, for you guys for coming and presenting to us today. Um, and for your patience this morning, I know it's been, it's been a little while that you guys have been here waiting, but, uh, we do appreciate it. Um, and yeah, what John, what John was saying, I, I think this is really important for the APC to, to view. Uh, what NB Energy has been doing with this current project. Because, um, essentially what's happening is they are decreasing the probability of, uh, of, of fire starts within. Our, within the Lake Tahoe Basin here with this project. And, uh, not only that is, it allows for, um, fire departments to make a stand to advancing fires. Because, as I mentioned before in the past, it's not a matter of if a large fire is gonna happen again here in the basin, it's a matter of when. And I think that these projects can, can, are really doing a good job. Um, and so I, I think with that, I'd like to introduce, uh, Will Morgan with NB Energy and, and they can proceed with the presentation.
Welcome gentlemen.
Thank you for the invite, Garth, and thank you Chair, uh, Committee for having us. So, um, my name is Will Morgan, I am the manager of our Natural Disaster Protection Program Management. So my focus is on the system hardening front, I also have Scott Lucas and Kevin Grogan. Um, they're on our fire mitigation side as well as the veg management, they'll speak to those pieces a little bit later. Um, so wanna give you guys, I think most everybody's pretty familiar with our natural disaster plan. But wanted to give kind of a brief overview of all of it that, that's entailed in the program, so you could go to the next slide. Um, so, as recent as last year, we kind of rebranded the, the name of Natural Disaster Protection Program. It's kind of a mouthful, um, we're calling it Power Safe NV now. So, uh, just a brief overview of NV Energy, we serve ninety percent of the state, um, with a service territory. That covers over forty-six thousand miles, obviously, we serve the Nevada side of the Tahoe Basin. Um, when we were Sierra Pacific, we serve both sides and the entire Tahoe Basin. Um, collectively between Northern and Southern Nevada, we serve one point five million customers. And Power Safe N, NV Team at NV Energy's, uh, main focus is reducing disaster risks. So while kind of the main focus of, of these programs is wildfire mitigation. Um, our Natural Disaster Protection Program goes beyond that, it addresses, uh, earthquakes, major snowstorms, uh, heat waves. And grid resiliency during events like that. Um, Power Safe's a holistic approach to wildfire mitigation and, and disaster mitigation. That includes prevention, uh, detection and protection. Uh, next slide please. So a big part of that is, is our system hardening, so what that truly means is hardening our grid. Um, whether that's through overhead rebuilds and rebuilding the power lines, undergrounding, uh, hardening our other infrastructure. Such as substations, so, um, a, a couple of the programs. While we'll go through all of the main hardening programs that, that we've been working on since the inception of the program in twenty twenty. Um, one of the big ones, especially for the Tahoe Basin, has been copper wire removal. Um, copper wire is a very brittle conductor, um, it's very good at carrying ampacity. Um, great conductor, but over time it becomes brittle. So since we started, uh, the, the copper wire removal in twenty twenty-two, we've removed seven point three miles in the Tahoe Basin. Um, a big chunk of that is, uh. Now the name, uh, uh, Tunnel Creek South along SR twenty-eight, there was about a four-mile section there. Uh, we actually just completed the last piece of that this season. Um, so that four miles, and then there was, there's a few other pieces that were scattered out through our system. In the Glenbrook area, Round Hill and down in State Line. As of today, everything that we have mapped for copper wire in the Tahoe Basin has been removed, and it's been replaced with a covered conductor. Um, and I, I meant to bring a sample, I apologize. But, uh, the cover conductor is essentially the same conductor that we have in a new line build in the valley. But it has a gray coating on it, so what that helps prevent is when there's high wind events or snow unloading, or a tree's, uh, branch falling into the line. It prevents that line from going phase to phase and creating an arcing and sparking event, which is one of the main triggers for, uh, ignition events. So, uh, coupled with the copper wire removal is we have a, a, just a dedicated line rebuild program. So we've looked at areas in our high-fire risk areas and determined. Between age of the infrastructure, working with the fire agencies, um, as well as our operational teams. What areas are at most risk, and we are targeting those and, and rebuilding those lines, even if they're not copper wire to. A covered conductor standard. So, um, we started our first pilot in twenty twenty-two, we did a mile in, uh, Incline Village. Um, this year, well, since twenty twenty-two, we've completed six point one miles. We did, uh, roughly three point five miles in the state line area, uh, up off Chimney Rock, uh, this season. And there's an additional three point nine miles planned for rebuild for next year. Um, another mitigation effort that we've put into play, or that, that we tested is called spacer cable or spacer wire. Similar to tree wire, but, um, if anybody's driven past Kale Park or skis up at Heavenly. Um, you'll see some of our lines that are in kind of a diamond-shaped configuration, um, similar conductor. Um, it's really meant for East Coast applications where they have much smaller trees. So, uh, the spacer cable actually has what's called a messenger wire holding it up. Um, and that's rated up to thirty thousand pounds breaking capacity. Um, trees in Tahoe can snap that, uh, relatively easy. So it's, it's really meant in East Coast, uh, southern applications where they have tight rightaways, tight easement areas. And they just have a small, you know, two-foot path through the trees. Um, but similar conductor, it is covered, um, so the protection is there. But after completing the pilot, um, it was very cost prohibitive. It was almost double the cost of standard tree wire application, so, um, we've decided not to pro, progress forward. With the spacer wire anymore. Um, another project that we have is our single pole replacement, so, and I'll touch on it on the next slide too, is we have a detailed inspection patrol program. And, um, on, on different cycles, so for Tahoe, for example, in tier three, we inspect every single pole every three years. So they have about a ninety-five item checklist, a certified journeyman lineman goes and inspects that pole, looks for any deficiencies. Structural integrity issues, and if they find any, we get it designed, get the pole replaced. We don't wait for a rebuild, um, or a master plan project to go address the risk. So, um, since twenty nineteen, we've replaced five hundred and seventy-three poles, uh, in the basin. We have an additional ninety-five poles planned for next season. Uh, next slide please. So, one, one of the biggest risks that we have in our system is expulsion fuses. So on every transformer, uh, overhead transformer, you'll see what's called, it's called a cutout. It's basically like a small circuit breaker for your house, but when it sees a fault in the system, it, it opens the door. So that there's no more power flowing. Um, we have since gone through in Tahoe alone and replaced every expulsion fuse with a non-expulsion fuse alternative. So, um, that's essentially a vacuum bottle fuse that, uh, the device operates internally, does not create any arcing and sparking. And mitigates the risk of, uh, starting an ignition event. So we completed all of our expulsion fuse replacements, uh, the last ones were done in twenty twenty-three. So tier three Tahoe is actually, uh, one hundred percent complete. And our standard moving forward for any new projects, new reboot, or new business projects. Is that they have to have these non-expulsion fuse, um, alternatives. Um, and then tree attachments, I'm sure everybody has driven around the basin and seen, uh, in the fifties and sixties. Somebody thought it was a great idea to, uh, staple service wire to trees. Um, that is a very high risk. So we have a proactive program where we're actively reaching out to property owners. And requesting an easement, going in and planning with them, setting a pole to get that, uh, to get that service removed from the tree. So that we mitigate that risk. Um, and some, some homeowners have taken the approach that they want to underground their service. So we work with them to give them a credit for what we would have spent setting the pole, and then they pay for the, the difference in that. So, um, a really good program, um, so far, we've completed two hundred and sixty-four tree attachments. Um, when we mapped it in twenty twenty, there was over twelve hundred in the basin. So, um, we're targeting about eighty removals per year. Um, it's a very lengthy process because every single project needs an easement signed from each homeowner, so. Um, but this, this year alone, we're, we're on, this is the first year where we've done the proactive outreach to the customers. We're on pace to hit about fifty this year, um, and targeting eighty per year until we complete those twelve hundred. Um, and lastly is our inspections and patrols program, so I touched on this briefly. So, in our fire risk area, our high, high wildfire threat areas, we have detailed inspection programs. So like I said, there's a, a lineman that goes to every single pole and looks at every bolt, cross arm, insulator, looking for any potential issues. Um, so for tier three, we inspect every three years. Now, in the two years in between the detailed inspections, we still patrol, so they will, it's not as detailed. But we will have a lineman go through and, and walk the line and make sure there's no apparent issues. Um, we've completed two full cycles on that. Um, so in the first detailed inspections, I believe there was about two hundred and seventy-five, uh, what we call priority zero. Uh, corrections that needed to be made, so it's a, you know, an imminent threat to, uh, public safety and outage. Um, in this last round, we had less than twenty priority zero corrections. So the work that we're doing is, um, actually, it, it is enhancing the grid. And we've seen through all of this work with system pardoning, we've seen an increase in reliability in a lot of areas in Tahoe that we are completing work. So, you know, a lot of good things are coming out of the work that we're doing. Uh, next slide. And then the final pieces, uh, are, are strategic undergrounding, so I wanted to highlight one project upfront. Um, the Glenbrook Undergrounding, um, a, a nonprofit, uh, homeowner group approached us. In the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty timeframe to look to underground, uh, all of Glenbrook as part of, uh, wildfire mitigation. So through that, we, we approached the Public Utilities Commission and actually got approval to enter a cost-sharing partnership with Glenbrook. So, um, through our Natural Disa, Disaster Protection Program, Glenbrook had been identified to be rebuilt. In the next five to ten years, so we ended up giving the Glenbrook nonprofit what it would have cost us to rebuild the lines overhead. As a credit for them to underground, and they cover the rest of the cost. So, a very successful project so far, uh, we started construction on the first phase in September of twenty twenty-three. Um, we completed phase one, uh, in June timeframe of twenty twenty-four. And began construction on phase two, um, so roughly to date, about one point five miles of, of new wire has been pulled in underground. And the crews are actively working today, actually removing some of the overhead power lines, mitigating some of that risk. Um, another, uh, another point that's been addressed through the Glenbrook project is, uh, some of the homeowners took it upon themselves. To underground the services and change out their panels to an underground fed. So what that did was, we were able. So what that did was we were able to address twenty seven tree attachments and get those out of the air as well. Um, so overall, the project is roughly about five miles that will be uh ultimately undergrounded. And just a few hi, I I already went over the highlights of phase one, two and three, but um phase three, we're in the final design and easement procurement. It's a little easement procurement is a, is a very long process. So it's been, you know, two and a half year process getting some of those, but um, we are anticipating starting construction in May of two zero twenty five on phase three. So really good project. Um, and uh if you can go to the next slide, I'll share a couple of other cost sharing partnerships we're, we're currently looking at. So um the US Forest Service actually approached us about the Zephyr Cove Resort and potentially undergrounding. So we went to the Public Utilities Commission last year, um and were granted approval to pursue cost sharing with them. So we're currently working through the electric design with uh the LTVMU office um and and gonna start the civil design here shortly. And that would underground roughly a mile right through the center of Zephyr Cove and then also under, looking to underground the crossing right at Warrior Way the fire department there. Um, another project is the TTD bike path. So um TTD is actually moving forward with construction, I believe, of a mile from um from Secret Harbor. Um, and we're, we've been in discussions with uh the bike path project since, I think, two zero sixteen about pursuing undergrounding. Um, and since the project is now ramped up uh or ramped back up, we've gone to the commission and asked for approval uh to pursue a cautionary partnership for that mile of bike path that they're looking to construct in the two zero twenty six timeframe. So um a lot of really good things coming out of the cautionary partnerships and what it does, uh, you know, the obvious benefit is the wildfire mitigation, but there's benefits to all the rate pairs on the Nevada side where um essentially they're getting underground for the cost of what an an overhead rebuild costs and the Tahoe Basin, depending on what area we're in, um, undergrounding could be three to four times as expensive as an overhead rebuild. So um, really big benefit to the rate payers as well. Um, on the undergrounding front, not just the cost sharing partnerships, um, we have our strategic undergrounding plan, which was created in consultation with fire departments um a- as well as our operating groups. So we have roughly thirty segments identified, not just in the Tahoe Basin, uh Angel Peak in Southern Nevada is also part of that and some areas in the Carson Valley that are tier three. Um, but we are looking to start construction on the first couple of phases of our underground pilot next season um with two projects and incline and one in the Round Hill area. So um, a lot of good work gonna be coming next season as well. Next slide. And I'll turn it over to Kevin and Scott.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Uh, my name is Kevin Grogan. I'm with NV Energy's Vegetation Management Department. I'm a senior vegetation management administrator with the department. We've been working hard and over the last few years since two zero nineteen to, you've probably seen us increase our presence and our frequency here with our foresters knocking on doors, hanging door hangers, tree crews. Uh, Asplin is our primary tree contractor, the big orange trucks coming through quite more often than they did in the past because we're working very hard to increase our frequency and and increase our, our cycle for making it through circuits completely and then returning to come back and try to to try to make sure that we have that tree clearance, but also trying to see as much as we're able to um to get as many trees removed as possible uh to to reduce power outages, to increase fire resiliency. Um, and it's been a huge endeavor because we've had lots of trees all over throughout the Nevada side of Lake Tahoe, the events, the, the density is, is great. It's not as great as it is on the west side. But uh we've had a tough battle trying to increase our tree clearances alongside the lines, especially along the main lines, which we typically can't take power outages on because there's no way to isolate those areas. So working hard to increase that cycle frequency, you're seeing us a lot more present in the communities. Uh, we're working with all the agencies up here, including you guys, uh Bruce Barr. We contact him constantly regarding um tree removals that we want to do. Some of these are for and in support of Will and his team's efforts to replace, you know, poles or power lines of any kind, including the tree attachments. Um, we do a lot of work with his teams uh to try to pave the way before they go in to build. We try to go into the communities to get as much of the trees cleared, whether it's via trimming or removal as much as possible so that we can pave the way for their line clearance uh in order that once the line is built, it has the adequate clearance that it'll need moving forward into the future without trying to reclaim that after the fact. Of course, we do have to work with every property owner as we go and get removal form sign for each individual property owner. So we don't remove trees unless we have the approval of private property owners or agency landowners. Uh, we have to make sure that we have that documented in order to obviously protect ourselves. Um, as an example here, I've got some points, um, you know, just for this year, but like I said, we've worked uh quite a bit over the last few years, like to, to reduce our cycle frequency. And what I mean by that is is to make it through the entire circuit from, from where the substation is all the way through all the little what we call tap lines or laterals throughout all the neighborhoods until the end customer. We're patrolling through the, all of that and and we set, we have sixteen different circuits here at Lake Tahoe and we set them on what we think would be an ideal cycle to try to maintain. And now we're actually tasked and mandated by the state in Nevada to get the Lake Tahoe circuits on a four year cycle. And we're doing very well on that endeavor, actually. In the last five years, I can say that we're already set to rotate all the way back through a second time already at this point and getting ready in the next couple of years to start making our third pass through. So we're doing very well, I think, on that endeavor. Um, with that also is a mandate that's been given to us to make sure that we patrol every single circuit at Lake Tahoe on the Nevada side annually for hazard trees, which is a major endeavor because not only are we, like I said, you know, we have some circuits that are set up for, for this cyclic maintenance, which may be anywhere from three to six circuits annually, depending on what we think we can pull off, um, which is budget driven as well. Um, but sending our foresters through every single circuit to patrol every single line mile to find all of the trees that could potentially either entirely fall through the lines or have component parts, limbs, tops, fallout, go through the lines. Uh, it's a major endeavor for us. It takes months every year to make sure that we get those patrols done. And then we're working with homeowners and agencies to try to get all those permissions in place so that we can actually activate on that and try to get all those trees removed to storm harden our circuits before winter comes. In fact, we're still at Lake Tahoe here, even now in South Lake and North Lake with our tree crews working to either do hazard tree mitigation or full circuit maintenance right now um currently. And as long as the weather seems to kind of hold off and we don't have, you know, more than five to six inches of snow, we'd like to see if it's possible that we would continue to do that um in order just try to keep pushing our weather window as long as possible and mitigating as much risk as possible. So for this year, just to hit some of these uh bullet points that we have as far as accomplishments at this point, we've completed eight circuits. Um, actually, I'll back up just real quick. Vegetation management used to just only be what we, we now call it aerial veg management, just the radially up in the air around the power lines. Over the last few years, we realized that it's not only just mitigating the lines and the poles themselves. Uh, you know, the component parts, the limbs of the trees that, you know, their proximity to the power lines, it's also the ground fuels and the fuels around the poles and the fuels between each pole, what we call that span of lines from each pole to pole. It also matters, what do we have underneath there? Do we have new trees that want to establish directly underneath the lines? Of course, conifers want to be, you know, eighty, ninety, uh, someone here said earlier, up to a hundred and fifty foot tall trees. It doesn't make sense at all to allow these, these conifers that want to be so large to propagate and grow when they're not going to have the room or the space to actually get to their full maturity. So we want to be as strategic as we can and remove those trees as early as possible so that we can keep our rightaways clean and clear from any, you know, mechanical or line issues that we might have. And we know that we're operating at high elevation here at sixty two hundred feet or or more, all the way up to the mountain tops, wherever our power lines are going. So we want to make sure that we're taking in typical Tahoe weather, lake wind effects, wind and things like that. We're looking at all those things when we're trying to judge what we think, you know, could happen in these tree to line relationships as well as now in the infrastructure to ground relationships. What do we have there? Like I said, on that, on the forest floor there, that could potentially be an ignition source. And could we use those? And I think Scott will probably talk to this too. Could we potentially use our rightaways maybe strategically as fire breaks? That's something that we talk about and something that we're looking into continually. So for, we have two components basically now to the veg management department. You see this here on the slide. We've got what we're calling aerial veg management, which is kind of the division or portion of our department that focuses really just on the lines up in the air, managing those power lines from strikes or from limb encroachment and things. And then we have that ground fuels vegetation management with, which is the other component of our department that really is just going to focus on uh maybe debris mitigation, pole clearing, uh and that clearing between each pole from pole to pole, like I said, what's called a span. Um, so for aerial veg management, which is primarily what I focus on, this year we've completed eight circuits entirely at Lake Tahoe. Uh, some of that is from our full circuit maintenance and some of them are completed because we've gone through the entire circuit and found, you know, all the hazard trees that we needed to mitigate and we feel that we've storm hardened those lines adequately. In that process, so far, we've completed over two thousand trees. Almost a thousand of them are trims and and a little over a thousand of them are removals. And I think that just right there, those two numbers show that we have a, we're having a pretty high success rate at this point. We're having nearly or or greater than a fifty percent success rate on our, when we approach customers or agencies with with the tree work that we want to do, we're having great success in actually getting the trees out that we're targeting to have removed, which I think is helping to make a difference in risk reduction and reliability improvement. As far as forest service treatment units, um, which I'm sure you guys are aware of, it's not only uh us with our contractor Asplin and our, our uh patrolling contractor, but we've got other contractors that work with us in logging and helicopter logging and ground mechanized equipment aspects of what we're doing. And so we collaborate uh uh under great, you know, efforts with planning and logistics and everything to accomplish these treatment units. And so far this year, we've completed eight treatment units, which is just the tree felling as well as helicopter operations uh removal of those logs and debris. And I think you guys may have seen some of that activity in the last couple of months. Um, moving into two zero twenty five, we have ground operations, uh mechanical heavy equipment and things in order to fully complete those eight treatment units. We have just some minimal aspects of uh log and debris mitigation to actualize on those. And then, like I mentioned earlier, um, we have completed the aerial annual Tahoe hazard tree inspection across all sixteen circuits here at the lake this year. Uh, and then I'll turn it over to Scott to hit any points on the ground fuels.
For ground fuels management, um, that was a function of fire mitigation previously and we're trying to move that over. Uh, so veg management is handling all the veg management aspects. It doesn't make sense for uh one office to be doing one and another to be doing another. Also, we're finding that in the fire mitigation side, we're pretty busy with some other things that I'll get into in a little bit. Um, a lot of this work is done in collaboration with the local fire departments. We have cooperative agreements with Tahoe Douglas and with North Lake Tahoe. And so they go out and do a lot of circuit, circuit clearing and maintenance for us, including what we call pole grubbing when they're clearing around each pole individually to make sure that it's uh more fire safe, not only from an ignition, from the pole itself, but if from an encroaching wildfire. We have those on two year maintenance. Uh, um, those are supposed to be on two year maintenance for the pole grubbing. So every two years, the departments go out and they do that clearing for us and then we re- we reimburse them for the work. We also have another contractor that aids that with that, but as far as for the work that in the actual fire districts, we're trying to employ the fire departments to, to do that work in a cooperative effort. Uh, next slide, please. So a large part of my, and again, sorry to reintroduce, I'm Scott Luke, I'm a fire specialist in NV Energy. I started with the company about eight months ago. Uh, prior to that, I have thirty years federal experience of wildland fire and incident manager. So I retired as the state fire management officer for the Bureau of Land Management in California. This is federal retirement. Anyway, so um, so a big part of fire mitigation is situational awareness and emergency response. Um, right now, the company has two full-time meteorologists that we have on staff. Uh, they do monitor twenty four seven between the two of them for weather events as it leads into our emergency and proactive responses. Uh, we've added nine new wildfire cameras as part of our network. Those cameras aren't just they're NV Energy property, but they're part of the Alert West Network. So there's hundreds of cameras out there and it's done through the Alert West company. And so they, they combine all those cameras into one program with uh art- artificial intelligence and also human monitoring. So when we see a new event, they focus in on it. It's not just us, it's, it's all the fire agencies. Um, it's Noah, they're all using these cameras to determine if, if there's a fire out there and to what extent. So this year we had, um, so we employ three fire specialists, two of us are Reno, one of us are in Las Vegas. Um, and part of our, part of our job is to monitor and respond appropriately to fires that may have an impact on NV Energy property. Uh, this year, we'll, this number's gone up, uh, but recently we were at a hundred and seventy two incidents that we were had to have, take some sort of action on. Uh, the previous year was thirty year, thirty fires for that year. So this year's been a bit of a load on us um and also testing our capacity and telling us where we need to make improvements as far as our situational awareness and response. We've got a few programs for de-energization. We're gonna talk about here in a couple, in a couple of minutes, but uh one of our newer, one of our newer policies is our emergency de-energization policy. Uh, and that's when there's an encroaching wildfire approaching or at or near our infrastructure will, and it's deemed uncontrollable and unpredictable. Uh, we will de-energize to a certain radius for reasons of public and responder safety, but also so that we're not contributing to an exacerbated or um increased fire situation. And I'll talk more specifically about emergency de-energization later, but we, this year, we've already done it um seven times, including one, two days ago, which I'll talk a little bit about. And then um it does have pretty large effects on the customers and it can be for a lengthy duration of amount of time. Uh, we're asking the customers to understand this is like any unplanned outage, whether it's weather related or uh infrastructure impact related that, that there will be outages because of wildfires. Next slide, please.
I have to cut it down. It's too big to handle it.
Oh, okay. All right, we're going, going old school. All right, so um, so there's a couple different methods of de-energization. We have number one is proactive. Um, and so we're, pardon me, let me back up a little bit. So the, the different types of, of de-energization we use is, is one's called fast trip fire mode, which is a setting in the system. We make the system more sensitive to conditions so that there's less of a chance of an ignition during the summer. So as we increase the sensitivity, what normally would take X amount of force to, to trip the circuit, it's a lot less during, during fire conditions in the summer. This results in more outages, but also results in less potential for an ignition due to the electrical system. Uh, we have our public safety outage management, which is when we go out and we de-energize specific circuits when they're going to reach forecasted weather conditions, specifically winds. Right now, as the abbreviation is PISOM, we, same thing, uh Liberty would call PSPS or PG&E would call PSPS. Uh, right now we have two active PISOMs going on, like we just de-energized Virginia City Highlands because the winds that are happening up there as we speak, six hundred customers are gonna be without power for an undisclosed, an undetermined amount of time. And we're getting ready to de-energize in Genoa right now because forecasted winds. Uh, this is based on risk and modeling and our meteorologists make the determination, the recommendation to our leadership when they think it's time to de-energize um the lines to the high winds and again, fire conditions. And the last is uh emergency de-energization. That's what I was talking about earlier. We have an approaching uh wildfire that's going to be considered unpredictable or uh uncontrollable. Uh, wildfires are eventually controllable, but sometimes that doesn't happen for a while. Uh, and that's a determination made by myself or my two partners. Um, then we will de-energize to a specific radius from that point of the incident based on criteria being fire danger, uh sustained winds. based on criteria being fire danger, sustained wind speed and overall fire conditions. I talked a little about about the faster fire mode and I'm going to ask Will to to explain the actual mechanism of faster fire mode for me.
So like Scott was saying, F T, we call it FTFM or fast trip fire mode is a, it's an advanced setting that we utilize on our circuit breakers and also the non-expulsion fuses that we have installed in the Tahoe Basin and other areas have the intelligent capability to upload these settings. So you think of a substation circuit breaker like the breaker at your house, breaker at your house sees a fault, it opens up and de-energizes that circuit. Substation breakers are that on a much larger scale. But they're smart, so we can tell that breaker, okay, when you see a fault, wait two seconds and then open up. And close back in five seconds later to see if whatever caused the fault has cleared the line. With these settings, what would normally take a breaker to open in about two seconds, creating that potential for an ignition event or sparking, we can drop that to about a tenth of a second or less. PG&E has seen great success with it. So Cal Edison, as well as SDG&E have employed it. We have been in fast trip fire mode in in Tahoe and other tier three areas for most of the summer. And we've seen, we haven't had any ignition events. So it's another tool for us to use in, you know, in conjunction with system hardening and advanced vegetation management to help us further mitigate the risk. And I don't have the exact number, our meteorologist, Alex has a better understanding, but between vegetation management and fast trip fire mode, Cal Berkeley did a study, it mitigates the risk of an ignition by about seventy-five percent. So pretty, pretty big risk reduction with just those tools. And then you couple in the active system hardening and the inspections and patrols that we're doing and it it really, it doesn't drive the risk to zero, but it greatly reduces that risk.
Okay. And so again, our public safety outage management, like I said, we have two in progress right now. In twenty twenty-one, we did three PISOMs and twenty twenty-two, we did eight. And in twenty twenty-three, we only had to do two. That's not only wind-based, it's also fuel-based, fire condition-based. So we're not going to, we're not going to de-energize due to winds if the fuels aren't going to be receptive to fire. So that's, that's the entire reason why we're turning off is again, is a, is a fire safety measure. We can PISOM anywhere in the state or in our service territory, but we, there's, there's increased or more sensitive criteria for our elevated risk areas specifically like Lake Tahoe and the Sierra Front and Mount Charleston. We twice now set up the PISOM, Mount Charleston, over the past month, we've sent, you know, set up crews down there to be ready to go, ended up not doing it, but turning about seventy-two hours out when we have indications that the winds are going to exceed that that threshold and also we have the fire conditions. And with PISOM, you know, we try to get as much advanced messaging out as possible, including comfort care or customer care resources. So the best way to be, the best way to be alert about potential PISOMs is to be on our app, which gives you the, which will send you, will push you notifications saying, hey, we're considering PISOMs in this area as well as the emergency de-energizations. The emergency de-energization policy, again, this is specific to wildfire encroaching on our infrastructure. The entire intent is to provide for additional firefighter, public responder and public and customer safety so that we're not causing additional fires from arcing due to smoke impacts on the lines. And also, I mean, after thirty-plus years of fighting wildfires, there was a lot of times that I couldn't get in there and I had to wait for the power to be turned off. So this is making sure that responders can get in there as soon as possible as the fire advances and we're not delaying the response. Our goal after we de-energize is to re-energize as soon as possible. So I'll use Monday as an example, the fire near Galena, the Calhan incident, as I started to monitor, it was clear that it was not going to be that they were not going to be able to to stop it immediately and that it was making an advance through a neighborhood with multiple circuits in the area. So we ordered emergency de-energization, which is done from our control room. And so we de-energized all power from a three-mile radius of that fire, which include took took out the north end of of Washoe Valley. Once we de-energize, we're looking at what can we warm up safely? Meeting criteria of our policy is as soon as possible. So the Davis fire is another good example where we had, we de-energized, we had plans to continue to de-energize because they were predicting a seven-mile run to the north around the west side of Reno that day. And we were trying to figure out how to actively do that so we could keep we could keep turning off the power as appropriate. Thankfully, we didn't have to do it. It didn't make that run. But at the same time, once we de-energize, we're working it, we're trying to work at what, what can we turn on right away safely so we can get customers restored as soon as possible. Again, we're asking folks to, when the emergency de-energization is happening, to consider the the reason behind it, which which I've already explained and and consider it like it would be any unplanned outage, like it was weather related or other impacts to system-related. So for this year, we did seven, I don't know if that includes the other day or not. We've done seven emergency de-energizations. And when we do that, it's not like we're just flipping the switch and not paying attention. I'm in constant communication with either the incident commander on the ground or the local duty chief for the fire departments, Forest Service of the Bureau of Land Management, letting them know what we're doing. We try to get someone to the incident command post as soon as possible. There's only two of us Reno, and if there's more than one fire, if that doesn't work very well. So, but we are in constant communication with the responders and trying to push out as much public information and customer information as soon as we can. I think that's all I have on on our de-energization policy. And I apologize, we were having some issues with the size of the file. So the last part of the presentation, I had to strip out to get it down the size, but that concludes our presentation. If you guys have any.
Yeah, wow. Thank you guys so much. I feel, I feel safer. I live in California, but you still serve, well, that's here, here Pacific. I don't know. I know you have a relationship.
So we, we don't provide, provide, we provide transmission into California. And so our first, our first real emergency de-energization we did was with the Gold Ranch Fire near Verdi. And so I happen to be the lucky individual on that day. And when we de-energize, we immediately knew about the twenty-five thousand customers on the Nevada side that we de-energized, including the Silver Legacy not being green for a bit. And then we found out about the twenty-five thousand customers on the California side that since we weren't feeding power to Truckee or Crystal Bay or the entire Sierra Valley, including a couple of mountain bikers who were stuck up on chairlifts on North Star, that we, we actually did fifty thousand, fifty thousand people total, our customers total who lost power. So we're starting to take a look at and better understanding of the effect of it. And that's the reason why as soon as we do it, which is a non-negotiable policy per Berkshire Hathaway, we look at warming up what we can as soon as possible to get power restored.
Nice, yeah. Unintended consequences of flipping a switch.
Thank you again for your presentation. I think this is really important for everybody to recognize the work that you guys are doing. But also I wanted to, I just have one question. I think the 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 ground vegetation work that you guys are doing. Did you say that all that's being visited on an annual basis?
We have, I can't remember how long our program of work is for initial treatment, but when we go back on a maintenance cycle, it's supposed to be on a two-year cycle for the ground fuels vegetation.
Okay, great. And I think that's really important because speaking of unintended consequences, you know, removing all these trees and creating these corridors that are underneath these power lines can modify the microclimates for fire starts. You know, I think it allows a large break in the forest to potentially, you know, stop an advancing fire, but I think it also can provide an opportunity for new fire starts with increased wind in some of these areas. And if the ground fuels are not managed properly, it could really have the potential to get away. So I think it's important that that maintenance is continued to be done on an annual or or every two-year basis. I also think it's important to understand what is happening, maybe by stepping back a little bit, looking at it from, from a, from a a larger scale. I know that there's a lot of people that are very upset with a lot of the trees that are being removed underneath these power lines. And and they see it as a real detriment. I think it's important that there, there are some, some trees being removed and you had those numbers, you know, you know, a thousand limbed and a thousand being taken out. But it's it's important to understand that removal of those trees helps protect the rest of the forest. If, if, if you don't have a fire start in this location, you won't have, or you decrease the the frequency of a fire start. You won't have an advancing fire that potentially moves up, marches up the hill and can just destroy thousands and thousands and thousands of acres of our existing forest. And I think it's important to keep that in context for the work that that NV Energy and the local fire departments are doing over here on the Nevada side. So thank you.
Yep, good point, Garth. Yes, Mr. McNamara.
Thanks for the presentation. Do you notice any change in the number of outages when you underground versus leaving them up?
So obviously, not in the Tahoe Basin. Generally speaking, when we underground, outages are potentially less frequent. Now, what comes with underground, where it's more tricky, especially in Tahoe and high altitude areas is in the winter time when we have underground outages, the outage generally lasts much longer because with an overhead line, a troubleman can patrol that, see the fault relatively quickly. On a lot of our underground outages, you'll find that they're six, eight, ten hours because they have to dig up faults, they have to locate the transformer and try and pinpoint where that outage is and then call a crew in. So while the overall outage frequency might be less, the the duration when outages are experienced, because we do experience failures on our underground components. Those durations are much longer.
Well, I, I get a message every time. I'm Incline Village. Every, we have very frequent outages and it's always just described as an equipment problem. That's why I wonder, is this caused by wind? Is it caused by snow load? Is it caused by, you know, other factors? It would be helpful to know that we're, we're on a, on a path towards fewer power interruptions there. I just don't know what, what is the plan to alleviate that? Is it undergrounding or is it clearing vegetation or is it all, all things?
It's, it's all things. So it's, you know, with Kevin Grogan's department, it's the vegetation maintenance cycles, it's, it's active rebuilds of overhead facilities that potentially can't be undergrounded due to the existing geology or in some instances, there's no room in the roadway for us to put anything new because the right of way is so tight. But it, it is a combination of everything that we went over with the system hardening and the veg management, our, our, our advanced settings that help, will ultimately help reduce the number of outages. Our first year of system hardening in the basin was twenty twenty-two. And we saw a drastic decrease in the number and frequency of outages that we experienced in twenty twenty-three winter time, like the twenty-two to twenty-three winter. I think our operational departments reached out and said, you know, made the comment to us, our, our system operations as well as some of the fire agencies have mentioned that how they could notice the difference in i- in the number of outages that they'd experienced. So it, it really is a combination. Now Incline Village does have quite a few segments of undergrounding slated. There are also sections that are proposed for overhead rebuilds. So you know, it's, it's all part of our overall natural disaster plan, but all of those will help ultimately reduce.
Have you given, have you given a similar presentation to In- Incline, IFGID or the county commissioners, like Washoe County?
I don't know if we've done Washoe County Commissioners, but I know we did a presentation with IFGID in March of this year, a very similar presentation to this. And we've done multiple town halls on both sides of the lake, north and south lake.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cyber.
Yeah, I just wanted to add on to the, the topic of, of undergrounding there, but so I'm from the Forest Service, in case you didn't hear introductions in the beginning. And NV Energy is of course, one of our great partners and we really appreciate you guys, your responsiveness here in the basin. And so I wanted to comment on the undergrounding piece, just, just as a general statement that the Forest Service definitely supports undergrounding wherever that can occur. I think as you understood from this presentation here, that the limitation, there's sometimes limitations to, you know, geography and stuff like that. But the big limitation is, is funding. And from the standpoint of the Forest Service, the easements that we have with our energy purveyors does not allow the Forest Service to sort of essentially force the, you know, entities to do this. And so when this happens, it's a, you know, it's a, it's a joint effort and and like Zephyr Cove was an example of where you know, we were coming through the NV Energy Resilience Corridors project was coming through the rec sites on, on the east side there and there was a little bit of maybe miscommunication as far as the prescriptions that should be occurring within rec sites versus outside of rec sites. And so we had a whole bunch of trees that were getting marked for removal and we came in, you may have, I was the one who put the stop work to that. The day before that was, that was supposed to occur, there was supposed, there was going to be quite a few trees taken out of there. And so that just kind of got us all looking a little bit closer at the resilience corridors work within the rec sites. And we identified that especially in Zephyr Cove in order to accomplish the goals of the various zone one, zone two, zone three prescriptions in the area. That was going to be very difficult to do without changing the character of that rec site pretty significantly. And so that was one of the locations we looked at that. So I say that to both put out there that the Forest Service supports this undergrounding, but also to the other various entities that, you know, if you can bring money to the table with NV Energy, that, you know, the Forest Service would, would support those, those types of projects. And then I also just wanted to talk really quickly about this concept of fuel breaks and I just want to put out in the room that there is a concept in the communities as to what a fuel break is. And then there's sort of the, the Forest Service type definition of what a fuel break is. And I, I put this out there because if you look sort of like the Lake Tahoe Basin Management Unit Forest Service, the Forest Plan, it basically says in there, no fuel breaks. Because what that means to us is essentially fuel breaks are, there's, you know, various width, but if you want to go with a fuel of what a real fuel break in the Forest Service is, it's a up to a three hundred foot wide swath of clear cut. I mean, we're talking scrubbed ground, no vegetation. And so I just want to be very clear with everybody that there are some, some, some concepts of what a fuel break is. And then there are some definitions of what a fuel break is. And so as we get into some of these conversations in the future related to these topics, I would encourage us to maybe, you know, think about, think about alternative terms, or at least being very clear, especially from the various entities, what you're referring to when you talk about these concepts. Cause if, if we, we kind of talk about it from a strictly technical standpoint, you know, like we don't support that here in the basin just because of the level of impact that that would have on the, you know, the recreation aesthetics, it would be in violation of most of the TRPA visual thresholds, et cetera. So just wanted to put that out into the room there, that there are various definitions of that. And these, these utility corridors can be a great way to, you know, effectively function as a fuel break without actually meeting the definition. So, thanks.
Ashley, it's exactly those comments why we are so happy that you are sitting here. Because we've been talking about some things in the past for many years and the Forest Service hasn't been here to, to represent and state those comments. So thank you.
Glad to be here.
Yeah, thank you. We do have a hand raise online. So let's take that comment from Ms. Carr. And then we'll move on. Ms. Carr.
I, I just had a question, because I observed coming back from California to Nevada just a few weeks ago on Highway eighty-eight coming out of Jackson. There are poles there that I was totally geeking out on. They're all, they, they're either fiberglass wrapped or they're fiberglass poles. So I was wondering what sort of other technologies NV Energy is looking at for hardening of the system in that regard. I don't, I don't know that I heard much about the poles themselves when you were talking about hardening strategies. But it seems like there are other things that are potentially less flammable. So when fire does move through the area, you have may, must be less chance of the fire pole, excel, pole itself catching fire, causing a different problem than just you know, other fire-related issues. But I saw, I was just curious about those really cool fiberglass poles.
Yeah, so that was one piece our.
Yeah, so that was one piece. We do have a program. To address wood poles, it's a fire mesh wrap program. So we don't necessarily, we've tested fiberglass poles. Ultimately, what it came down to is they're very hard to maintain. And we just, they're not our preferred alternative now as a non-wood alternative. We do use ductile iron poles with the caveat that. The ductile iron poles have to be somewhere set that is bucket truck accessible because they're not climbable poles. So we have to think about the safety aspect of our our lineman when they go out in the winter time. They can't climb a ductile pole. They need to be able to get a bucket up to the base of the pole and and work that. So where we can, we are installing ductile iron poles. There's been, I don't have the exact numbers, but I know we've installed a couple hundred in the Tahoe Basin where we can. Now, where we're replacing poles or we're rebuilding and we don't have that access. We put on what's called a fire mesh. So it's a fiberglass product that's coated and it. When it reaches about 280 degrees, I believe. It activates, you think of like the old Chia Pets is kind of what it looks like. So the coating on the mesh expands as soon as it hits that temperature threshold and creates a protective barrier around the pole. And we've seen some pretty good success with that. Scott had referenced the the Gold Ranch Fire earlier. And in that alone, we had wrapped a couple hundred poles just last season. And I think 11 poles were in the burn area and we ultimately lost three, eight had the fire mesh activate. And ultimately, we're able to withstand the flames. So that that's our other technique for addressing flammable poles is we'll put the fire mesh on.
Well, thank you. The wind's picking up down here, by the way, here in Carson City.
Yeah, it looks pretty windy here, too. Hopefully, the power stays on. Steve Tashara, I see your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, again for the record, Steve Tashara. And I had a step away a couple of times during the presentation, but thank you for it. And I didn't know if you brought up the issue of the work that you're doing. In partnership with the Nevada Tahoe Conservation District to underground the utility lines along Kale Drive and State Line. Did you bring that up?
I did not. I think that that's been working through our new business, our Carson office. So that's not a program that I'm directly overseeing as part of the natural disaster program. So I'm not intimately familiar with the details, but I am aware of the project.
I I appreciate that. You know, it's an effort to prevent a potential natural disaster. Anyway, it's a it's an important project for for a lot of us. And we appreciate whichever division of NV Energy is working on it to. Hopefully, the project gets constructed next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Steve. Final thoughts? John?
Some of you know, we received from the Federal Highways Administration, a protect grant. To work on natural hazard resiliency for the transportation network. And so listening to this thought came to mind for to question both of the Forest Service and of NV Energy is. Can some of these corridors be used? Not just for fire breaks, but maybe for trails or for emergency. Movement of during evacuations or something like that? Or is that something we should talk with you guys offline about? But just wanted to.
I could answer just sort of generally. I think that there is an opportunity there, but there's also quite a few issues that come up with with those. With the concept of using the utility lines. And the utility lines have corridors underneath them and they maintain them. You know, on their, you know, regularity that we're we're talking about here. But they are not maintained in the fashion that we maintain, say, a a trail or or a road. Those standards are very different as far as, you know, the road base and things like that. And so we do have some examples where the power lines serve as recreational corridors. And we, you know, as part of the Basin Wide Trails project that is, that's just kind of, we're finishing up here. And in coordination with the TRPA Trails Group, you know, we looked sort of comprehensively around. The basin and, you know, and where it was appropriate, we kind of identified that. But also, you know, there is also some conflict with the utility providers and them wanting to have their. Infrastructure be readily accessible to the public as well. So it kind of depends upon the location. There are some places where it's appropriate. And some places where it isn't. I would say as a general statement, we would not consider any type of wheeled vehicle. Access using these corridors just because of the complications with the easements and and responsibility and stuff like that. But in some cases, it is appropriate for for trips.
Thanks, Ashley. Good thing you're here today. Okay, I think we're good. Thank you so much, gentlemen. Really appreciate you being here.
Thank you, guys, for the opportunity. Appreciate it. Thank you, Garth.
Keep up the good work. I know you will. Okay, I'm going to move us on. I'm sure everybody's getting hungry here. I am, so maybe we can speed through some things here. Let's go to reports, item seven. I'll pass it to Mr. Hester for the Executive Director reporting, including upcoming topics.
Thank you. I'll make this quick because I'm hungry as well. You you ask that we tell you about past actions. So that's the tourist core and Tahoe Valley area plans from the city. With that you all recommended approval of. Will be at the Regional Planning Committee along with the Chapter 13 amendments. So that package will move forward together. Meeks Bay EIS that you all certified was certified by the board. So that's that's one of the great projects we're working on together. Next week, next month. Tentatively, we could have Homewood Sky Area Master Plan Amendment here. So that'll be fun. And with that, I'll. Yield the floor to our General Counsel.
Yeah, thank. Thank you, John, and to you, Graham, for the General Counsel report.
Quick, quick legal update. Just to report, in October, October 16, TRPA filed a lawsuit, civil action. Against two individuals and two property owners in Tahoe Keys. It's a complaint alleging that these defendants were operating a an unpermitted boat rental concession. In Lake Tahoe, they're supposed to be doing that in Marina. They're supposed to have TRPA permits. Neither of those the case. TRPA staff have, over the summer, observed these these folks picking up. Boat rental customers at different public beaches. We've been partly, maybe you heard of Ashley of just out in Baldwin Beach. And they've been coming on, we've we've been working with the Forest Service and got assistance from the Forest Service. So we really appreciate that. But but we're going forward with litigation or, yeah, to basically get an injunction and civil penalties against. These operators and we'll be pursuing that over the winter. That's my main update. Just, you know, just generally, time of transition for TRPA legal. I'm really excited to be here. I'm very open to, you know, questions. Any of you can contact me anytime. So just wanted to put that out there as well.
We appreciate that. Thank you. Great. So let's do APC member comments or, excuse me, updates. If you have anything relevant that you'd like to share, please go ahead and do so. Start down here with you, Ashley.
Maybe could we start? I just, I want to get a idea of the flavor of updates that folks are giving.
Yeah, it's just anything relevant. We'll start over here with Hitch.
We had our grand opening for Sugar Pine Affordable. Sugar Pine Village Affordable Housing Project last month and the first six four units we fully occupied by end of month.
Yeah, congratulations. That's great. Ms. Stoller?
Thanks, Chair. I think I'm okay to report this publicly now. Charlie, our administrator for State Lands, just signed a settlement agreement. Reaching a settlement with one of our urban lots neighbors. Our lot experienced an excessive looming of nine Jeffrey pine trees. And we believe that that was accomplished in order to help enhance a neighbor's view. So that settlement was reached for $165,000. Those funds will be used to restore the property and also help support our urban lots program. Thank you.
Wow, okay, thanks. Garth?
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Thanks, Garth. Mr. McNamara?
I I'm sure I'm just stating the obvious, but I I took the time last couple of days to read all the. The public comment, which I'm sure most of you did. Seems to be a real tension in the. In the whole basin about this idea of. Trying to provide suitable housing for not only long residents. But also for workers. And the other side of it of assuming that any development that happens here is bad. From another group and using the. I don't want to say excuse, but the idea that any development is going to risk people's lives because of fire and things like that. Obviously, I I think there's got to be a little more outreach, a little more. And and I'm not taking all their their comments to heart about we're making money by. Letting developers have their way with us or whatever. But I think there has to be a little more outreach to the organizations. And maybe a little sit down and a and a little more. Less formal discussion with them about, we're all on the same page. We're all trying to provide the same things. We want a great place for our kids and families to recreate and live here. And we we don't want a bunch of hotels all along the all along the shoreline. Or 800 foot tall buildings and everything else they imagine. But I I think we definitely have to do a little more outreach and and conversation with them to dispel a lot of that. And I I know everybody here has got good intentions and a and a great heart. What you wouldn't be doing this, but I I think that's a step that we should consider. Doing more often or maybe even moving locally to engage them. Just a, just a thought. Not everybody's going to come here. They'll just keep sending letters or whatever. But I I think in the long run, we'll be better off talking with, engaging them where they are. Just a thought.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good thought. Agreed. Stacy?
I'll just, while not directly related to the Tahoe Basin, but Placer County, we are embarking upon our general plan update. It won't obviously affect the Tahoe Basin area plan. But but it it is a neat process where we will learn. You know, a lot of what the community is needing, wanting, you know, their visions, their complaints. Which obviously always feeds in to just every day of what we do. And I'll just, I'll leave it at that for right now.
Yeah, that's a big process.
Very big process.
Good luck over the next five years.
You know, thank you.
Ashley, comfortable now?
Sure. I think maybe my struggle is just that I don't know what this committee wants to hear about. You know, as far as updates from the Forest Service. I'll give you a couple of planning updates and then maybe if folks. While you're, while I'm talking here, you could be thinking about what updates you would like to be hearing from the Forest Service. That I could bring to this committee in the future here. So I mentioned the Basin Wide Trails project that authorizes e-bikes. And also some new trails and new trail huts, et cetera. We just finished up the objection period. So when people could submit objections on the project and we're now starting on the objection resolution for that. We won't be having meetings with the objectors until January. So looking at somewhere mid to the.
It looks like the TRPA cut out. Is everybody else online still with me?
Yeah.
Jennifer?
Maybe they have a power outage.
Looks like they froze. I don't know. See if they come back. Otherwise, we're probably close enough to wrap it. Say, switch hosts.
They must be having a power outage.
Wouldn't that be ironic?
How ironic? That's a good use of the word irony, right?
Well, I think I'm gonna, I'm gonna bail here.
Yep, me too, me too. It's unfortunate, though, because I think there were people waiting to make some public comments. The the energy thing went on maybe a little too long.
They're back, but they're muted.
Yeah.
Maybe.
It was last thing, yeah.
Can you hear us now online?
Yes.
Yes.
Anyway, let me or Brendan or any of know if you'd like to do that, we can get you on the agenda. Like hopefully sooner than we got Garth's side in mind. But but I, you know, I think you got a really good audience for a lot of that kind of stuff.
Sounds great.
Yeah, great, perfect. Sorry about that Zoom participants. We're just doing APC member updates and I'm ready to go to Zoom, so I'll start calling on you now. Ms. Chandler?
The only thing I'd like to say is that the third year of the Controlled Methods Test in the Keys went really well. And so now we're going through the process of deciding next steps forward. How how do we continue? And we'll have to go through the whole permitting process again in order to get. Approval to go ahead with next steps. So another few years of work. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Mr. Tashara?
Nothing further today, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Steve. Ms. Carr?
Yes, thank you. Nothing unnecessarily from the NDP. But I wanted to follow up a little bit too on. Area planning, I think it would be nice for me to have a better understanding of the TRPA's. Guidance document on an area plan development, you know. How to how to develop a good one, whatever that document's called. I apologize. I think it was, the title was mentioned, but I forget. The other thing that maybe John could convey when he brings us to the governing board. Because I know oftentimes he brings the comments of the commission to them for consideration. But, you know, I don't know if maybe the governing board could help by considering. Something for their TRPA's work plan for the coming year or or something. That could help to facilitate discussion about. The good work that some of the local jurisdictions are doing out there with area plan development. Because clearly, we've heard that that there are some really great considerations during that process. And how we can potentially memorialize those or share those or incorporate those. Into other area plans going forward in, you know, sort of a brainstorming kind of way. Or some other way that the TRPA leadership thinks might be helpful to. Try to move move this ball forward, maybe with less angst as one of the other. Commissioners just mentioned as well. So, thank you.
Yeah, that's a good idea, Jennifer. We, I'll talk to John and Graham about a potential educational item on on that.
I will send all the, or Tracy and I will send all the members the link to the area plan handbook.
Okay, yeah, we can.
Okay, yeah, we can see if we want to have an item in the future about a little deeper dive on that. Okay, great. Mr. Young?
Thank you. I'll say that the area plan guidebook is, or handbook, is an indispensable tool. We use it extensively when we created our Washoe Tahoe area plan. I don't know that it's possible really to accomplish it, that task without using the handbook. And I have, I know that some years before, John, you did provide the APC with a a review of that and how it works. And I think that at some point, you provided just Washoe County when we were struggling with what to do. I think you provided us with a review of that. So I, that would be really useful and really helpful just to kind of maybe circle back around and do it again. And along those lines, I would say that I really appreciate all of these informational agenda items. Not just today's, which were really good, but through the years, these so-called informational items, and this would be good for the Forest Service to hear, we really appreciate it. I mean, I think all of us, it it makes, it makes me feel more connected to what's going on around the basin. And that is just a critical thing to feel. Because, you know, I default back to my jurisdiction, like all of us do. You know, what does this mean to me at this jurisdiction? And it's really, really wonderful and useful to have these big informational items that really help us connect to what's going on just in general. So anytime you can bring those forward, I really appreciate it. And then the last thing I'll say is that Washoe County is going to begin the update of its area plan. I I don't know if we've quite submitted the the letter of intent yet or not. I think we have. We've narrowed the scope. We're bringing on a scent to help us with the environmental review. And we're beginning to schedule some of the first public kickoff meetings and so forth. It's going to be a focused update to help us deal with some of the the things that were left over when we adopted the plan, some of the things that have come forward since then with the, some of the work from the housing crew at TRPA. And then a couple of other smaller things that we found along the way that we'd like to really, it it kind of comes down to fixing them. You know, we've, we began to implement the code or the new area plan. And after you've had it for a couple of years, you start to find things where you go, oh. And so our scope is is to work on those TRPA mandated things and the things that we've discovered since we first adopted the plan. We think that you will see that in less than one year. Sometime this coming summer, we hope that you'll be able to start looking at what we're bringing forward. So that's what I've got for you today. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Eric. And then just from me, just quickly, Eldorado County did update our vacation home rental ordinance. It goes into effect actually next week. We went through a really extensive year-long community-led process and had quite a few hearings on that. So there's new rules in effect. We've ramped up our code enforcement. We're really, really making a lot of changes in that world, which is a big deal in our communities. And we are also starting, we're not starting, we're actually starting phase two of our area plan development process. It's called the Tahoe Eldorado Area Plan. We call it the TED. And we have a scent on board and the TED is marching forward. So that'll, that'll be coming before us, not for a while yet. But it's a, it's a pretty major process that we're undertaking. And I think I'll leave it there. Thank you all for sharing. I'm going to move us into, let's see, item eight, public interest comments. So these are our closing public interest comments. I'll just quickly read the rules to save you, Tracy. But we'll, we'll hear any public comment that members may have on item six A or six B. Those are our informational items. And again, members participating online on Zoom now is your opportunity to address the Advisory Planning Commission in closing public interest comments. Please raise your hand now by clicking the raise hand button at the bottom of your Zoom screen or by dialing star nine on your telephone. You'll be called on and unmuted by a TRPA staff member. And please be aware that the APC is prohibited from taking action on items which are not on our agenda. So I'll pass this to Catherine to help us with closing public interest comments, item eight.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There are no hands raised to make public comment.
Okay, thank you, Catherine. We also have no members of the public in the room. So I will close public comment and move us to item nine, which is adjournment. Can I please have a motion to adjourn? So, thank you, Garth. All those in favor, please say aye, aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you all. We stand adjourned. It's one twelve. Go have some lunch. And we'll see you in December for Homewood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm ready to close the meeting, right, Catherine?
You're all good. Thank you.
Okay.